I'm so glad no one's on.
I'll make everybody very good up.
All right. Good evening, folks. It's 6:30. I would like to call Town of Tiburon's council meeting to order. Lee, do you make a teleconference notification for Isaac now?
No, I'll just start with a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Nick Farr.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Wellner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Here.
Mayor Fredericks.
Here. All right, now it is your turn, Leah. Why don't you tell us about virtual participants, how they conduct themselves, and then give us the information on how to deal with items not on the agenda in open time?
If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar controls bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial start. Thank you.
Thank you. And open time?
Yes, this is the part of the agenda for public comments for items not on the agenda.
You will have three minutes. Would anyone like to speak in open time? Yes. Yes. No, no, come to the mic, please.
Hi.
You have three minutes to make your comments? Go ahead.
Well, my comments is not very much comments, Alice. It's a concern. And putting all joking aside, my name is Sylvia Vahl, and I've been in Tiburon a resident for 37 years, paid 37 years, never missed a payment, had my daughter grow up in these schools, and they were wonderful schools. And I am aware that I know that a few people in this room still have decency and have a degree in psychology, so they probably will have a better understanding of what I'm saying. I'm very concerned. Over two years ago, my money manager implemented the sale at Five Marsh Road. And throughout this two years, I'm living in South Carolina, and I just came back, and excuse me, and once again, I'm having tooth surgery, and I came from Hurricane Helen, and I'm not here for fun. I'm here simply not to quarrel, not to laugh, to close out Tiburon, as simple as that. I've, for two years, I've implemented the sales. It's not, I'm not pushing for money. I went to Marinhausen, spoke with Jeff, Kathleen quit, everybody keeping, giving me the runaround. I have all the documents, which tomorrow I'm going to the Attorney Generals and the Sheriff's Department, because the money manager and Greg, and I'm not Greg, he didn't say that, she didn't say anything horrible to me, but they did say, "S, shut the F up, Sylvia, and listen to me." And that's not mutual respect. That's not amicably closing or resolving an issue. That's actually degrading a single mother. I don't have anybody to protect me. I'm living in South Carolina. I'm trying to implement a closure with Marinhausen and myself. They said, "No, no, no, we won't put a lien," because they had a quarrel with the sale. I'm not a realtor. I don't know what's going on. I get a lien on my property. I've never missed a payment in 37 years. I'm calling up, and in the end, South Carolina says, "They're pulling your legs, Sylvia. Go down there." I come down here, and of course, you know, I'm getting laughed at, ridiculed, and I'm sure what they're doing right now is they're telling Marinhausen not to close the paperwork. Or when I went there the other day, Marinhausen says, "We're short staffed. Please," you know, I've been filling out the applications. Jeff was called, and Jeff's just like, "This is out of my hands now." So it's not even, they said, "We can't do anything. Everybody quit. There's no, there, you can't, you know, you can't come back here because we have the right to refuse anybody." So how do I sell the property? And this has been going on for two years. So that's my main concern. So tomorrow I will go down to the Attorney General's, visit Jennifer and Stephanie and to the Sheriff's Office, because they have all actually told me to shut the F up, and I don't know what to do. And I'm just being honest with you.
I know.
Alice, okay.
It's the three minute. Can you add?
Okay, and thank you for listening to me, and I know there's a few men that will take it into consideration.
Thank you.
I have a single mother with a daughter. I want to be out of here. That's all, out with no quarrels. Thank you. Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment? Yes. Doreen?
Hi, my name is Doreen Curtis, and I've been a resident in downtown Tiburon for 37 years. And I wanted to just make a comment on, I read in the ARC that the town council has voted to appeal the ruling of the Superior Court Judge in the matter brought by the people who live near parcel H in the housing element. And I wanted to thank the town council very much for voting to appeal. I think that is the right thing to do. I think her decision was not correct, and that it will be reversed on appeal. But I did read in the ARC article that two of the five town council members did not vote to appeal, and that concerns me because I wonder what that means going forward. I think this is absolutely the right thing to do, but we need to be sure that we continue to use the resources to pursue both the appeal and to begin the SEQA study, which we need to do. So I know that there has been public pressure from this group who live near H, parcel H, for the town to give up at this point, and I did read in the ARC that Jeffrey Chaney has been sending letters and emails telling the town council that they should look at this judgment as an opportunity rather than a hindrance quote, as a means of escape quote, as it's quote irresponsible to appeal and quote a huge waste of taxpayer money. But I just wanted to ask and urge all of you town council members to please not be intimidated by these comments. I believe the actual waste would be to give up at this point on what I think is an important matter to pursue. I know they call themselves the Committee for Tiburon, but in, with all due respect, they don't represent the interests of the Town of Tiburon. They represent the interests of Paradise K and a number of nearby residents who are objecting to parcel H in their neighborhood. We, I want you to, they've been very visible. They're the greasy wheel that you're hearing from. They've got their named committee, they're suing. I want you to please not forget the hundreds of comments you got from other residents during those, that one or two-year period when we went through numerous town council hearings, people made comments, people assigned petitions. We talked about the myriad of issues. We're already putting pretty much everything but parcel H. All the other stuff is going downtown already. It's going to increase the downtown population in just a few blocks by more than 10% of the total population of Tiburon. We have tsunami flood zones, horrible traffic, emergency access. I don't have time to do that all. I only have 20 seconds left. I just want to say that I, it's not ideal to have either. It's not ideal to put things at parcel H. It's certainly not ideal to add more down here. We already have more than we need, but we have to do this equitably, and there's more than enough downtown. So please, we don't, we're not a committee with a name. We're not in your face all the time, but hundreds of comments were made by us. Please, we're all still here. Don't forget about us. And please do what's in the best interest of the town as a whole. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Yes.
I am Kathy Silverfield, and I've been a Tiburon resident for 17 years, and I concur with everything that Doreen Curtis has just said. I would like to add several points. One, the numbers that we have been talking about for the last years are for Tiburon only. Remember, Belvedere also has housing requirements to meet. A large part of the boardwalk is in Belvedere. The Belvedere housing element has listed 69 total new units for 1515, 1520, and 1530 Tiburon Boulevard. There are additional new units on Beach Road and Cove Road. State housing element requirements for Belvedere is 160 units. Not all these units are within the two or three blocks of Tiburon Boulevard, Beach Road, and Cove Road, but all Belvedere exits are through Tiburon Boulevard. At an estimated 2.4 people per unit, we are talking about Tiburon adding over 1,500 people to the population of a two- or three-block area, plus the Belvedere addition. And the second point is, I have lived around the Bay Area, Oakland, San Francisco, Foster City, San Mateo, Portola Valley, Fremont, and now in Tiburon. I'm not eloquent enough to describe Tiburon's character in words. All I can say is Tiburon is unique. It's not just the terrific view and location, but also the historic small-town feel, the pride in its roots. A place away from the crowds and nothing but multi-story buildings up to the sidewalks. It would be upsetting to see Tiburon go from the extraordinary to an ordinary suburb of San Francisco. That is why it is worth every effort to limit the change to downtown Tiburon as much as we can. We all need to share the burden that the state has placed upon us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on issues that are not on the agenda? I am, yes. I'm sorry? No, 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 no. You're talking about something that is on the agenda. This is time for issues not on the agenda.
Yes, no, it wasn't clear on the agenda. So hi, I'm Beth, and it wasn't clear on the agenda if the children who are here are able to go at the beginning of the commenting on the park plan.
And I exchanged emails with someone. We will have them before the staff report when that agenda.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you, Beth. All right, so I'm going to close public comment for items not on the agenda and move now to the consent calendar. Would any member of the public like to comment on anything on the consent calendar? I am seeing none. Would any member of the council like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Nick Farr. Councilmember Nick Farr, are you there?
Yes, and yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. The motion passes. We move now to action items. The first action item is to consider the adoption of a resolution in recognition of Jerry Resin and Tiburon Open Space. Would the clerk like to read the resolution for us?
I would love to.
I do it.
A resolution of the town council of the Town of Tiburon commending Jerry Resin and Tiburon Open Space upon its triumphant achievement in the acquisition of the Martha property and expansion of the Tiburon Ridge. Whereas, Last Chance Committee to Save Old St. Hillary's Open Space swarmed in 1988 in response to an influx of major development applications in Tiburon. And whereas, in 1992, the Last Chance Committee, under the leadership of Chairman Jerry Resin, presented the South Tiburon Ridge Open Space Study to the town council, and thus began their story in open space advocacy and land preservation on the Tiburon Peninsula. And whereas, in the following years, Tiburon voters approved Measure L and Measure E measuring, purchasing the Jay and Harriman properties, which eventually became Old St. Hillary's Open Space Preserve. And whereas, the years that followed saw a flurry of Martha Company efforts to develop a 110-acre parcel at the tip of the Tiburon Peninsula into dozens of single-family homes, including sensational applications for development, hearings, and lawsuits, prompting the ARC to publish the historic headline, "Move Over Harriman, Here Comes Martha," a hint of the storm to come. And whereas, looking back now, the Town of Tiburon politely remarks, "A better headline may have perhaps been, 'Move Over Martha, Here Comes Jerry.'" And whereas, in 2012, the Last Chance Committee became Tiburon Open Space, and in 2013, the Trust for Public Land announced its interest in assisting Tiburon Open Space in acquiring the Martha Company land and donating it to Marin County. And whereas, Jerry Resin, now the president of Tiburon Open Space, spent the next decade assembling committee members and advocating for the acquisition of the Martha Company land for the enjoyment of the public. And whereas, with leadership and critical support from the Trust for Public Land, Tiburon Open Space, and the taxpayers who supported Measure M, the Marin County Open Space District closed escrow on August 29, 2024, on the $42.1 million purchase, nearly doubling the old St. Hillary's Open Space Preserve, a once unimaginable feat. And whereas, this extraordinary land will now sit quietly atop our peninsula. Echoes of past controversy now quieted, a symbol of how a group of local citizens with common purpose and passion can make a difference in their community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the town council of the Town of Tiburon hereby applauds the community and the expertise organized with the leadership of Jerry Resin for saving this little corner of the earth as an ecological system of protected species, as a recreational and educational amenity, and as a place that defines the Tiburon community as stewards of this earth. Be it further resolved that the town council of the Town of Tiburon hereby finds that Jerry Resin has truly left his mark on the Tiburon Ridge landscape and skyline, and expresses its sincere appreciation to Jerry on behalf of the current and future generations of humans, birds, not quite endangered but still special juvenile spiders, Tiburon jewel flowers, and other cherished flora and fauna, big and small, of the Tiburon Peninsula that will enjoy the land for decades to come, passed and adopted this 20th day of November, 2024.
Thank you, and congratulations.
I just want to say a few words. Are we talking to this puppy?
Oh, my gosh.
Never needed a microphone. I have a pathetically loud voice. I just wanted to thank everyone that's here and all of the other people mentioned in this lovely document. The words that we often speak in these kind of moments, talking about it takes a village. As I noted in some comments at the celebration, a village doesn't capture what has taken place here. It took a herd, a field of experts. Experts that all came together, experts at marketing, experts at fundraising, experts at getting people to show up somewhere, and experts of holding kites and flying kites and ribbon, ribbons across the hills. It was a fabulous effort by all of you. And the result, the words that I've been saying a lot lately is that we preserved Old St. Hillary's for everyone forever. And it is forever. I just ask you to think, you come back in 100 years in some alternate life form, who knows? But you come back in 100 years, that land will be there. It'll be sitting on that hillside, and it'll have been cherished all those years, and it'll be there because you all did it, and so I thank you all.
So I just want to say one thing. I've talked about Jerry a lot, but, you know, I want everyone in this room, especially the children who are here, to know that Jerry, Jerry worked for 40 years for something that he believed in. And without Jerry's work, and he will always tell you it's everybody else, and there's this big group, and now there is. But when he started, it was just Jerry. And he, without, without him, we would not have 110 acres of open space that is our ridge line, because everybody wanted to put houses on it. So for all the children in the room, I want you to remember that when you set your mind to something, you can actually do it. And the most important thing, even if it's only you, and you're the only one who thinks that way, you just set on a path, and you get a few friends to help, and then you keep on going. Isn't that right, Jerry?
Played out.
And then I'm going to talk to Jerry, who I've told many times, you are amazing. You are a gift to Tiburon. Your work will go down in history as the most memorable and significant thing that was probably ever done here. And I personally want to thank you, and I want to thank you on behalf of the generations that I've never met and never will meet. So thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. And any further comments from the council?
Yeah, I do. I just want to say briefly that I had the pleasure of spending some time working with Jerry when things weren't looking so good. And I just, I have to say that when no one else could see it, he could see it. And when no one else was willing to do it, he would do it, and it's just incredible. This is one of those projects that sort of, I got to witness something that no one thought could happen, happen, and it was Jerry. So congratulations.
I just would add one. As you all may know, John is a land use attorney, and hence, he and I have spent a lot of time around the four-letter SEQA Environmental Quality Act. I noted in the resolution that, the resolution said that this did not trigger SEQA. And I would just note, this is probably the one SEQA ruling that I will not appeal.
If I could just add super briefly, the resolution, I'm definitely going to vote to approve it, but it woefully understates my admiration and gratitude to what you did, because despite your modesty, it was you, as my fellow colleagues have said. It's incredible that you held that vision for so long and persisted and drew so many people along with you. It's a testament to a very, very powerful determination on your part, and we appreciate it.
And I too, as you know, appreciate it. It drew me into public service of the Town of Tiburon by working with the Last Chance Committee to acquire the Harriman, and always driven by your vision and energized by it, even when people around us were saying, gee, this can't happen. But we did it because of you, Jerry. Thank you very much. Yeah. All right, we move now.
Oh, you don't have to, you actually haven't approved the motion yet. No?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call. Okay, that's true. Is there further public comment on the resolution? I am seeing, is there any on Zoom?
Seeing them.
So there's a.
Yeah, I think I might have missed my chance, but I'd also like to thank Jerry and the wonderful group of folks that helped to bring the Martha property and save that wonderful piece of land forever. So thank you very much.
And that was our council member, Nick Farr, Isaac Nick Farr. All right, we have a motion and a second, and you're going to do a roll call vote.
Yes, councilmember Nick Farr.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. Thank you very much. We move on now. And we are taking Item A2 Parks and Recreation Plan. I would like to take this item and its subtext out of order. We have some very young advocates in the audience who need to go to bed so they can get up for school. And so at this time, just as an exception, I would like to ask public comment from anybody under the age of 12 to come forward to the microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us what you're thinking about. You have three minutes.
Hello, and my name is Harrison, and I would like a basketball court at Blackie's pasture. First, I am a, I ran around the block and counted all the basketball hoops in my neighborhood, and I found a total of 18 of them. And that told me we have a lot of basketball lovers in our town. I wrote a petition and started a goal of 300 signatures. In only six days, I got all 300. I went down to Starbucks, Woodlands, Nugget, and Blackie's pasture. Most people I spoke to who said, "Yes, they would love a basketball court at Blackie's." I even got contacts just so that I could play sports better. I play basketball every day at recess. Since I don't like basketball, the basketball court at my school too much, I was hoping we could get one at Blackie's pasture. Reed School's basketball court has four hoops, but are all spread apart, and there's no court and no backboards. I strongly believe there should be a basketball court at Blackie's pasture, and so many other people in Tiburon told me that over the last week, they want it to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're always very appreciative of the younger members of our community telling us what they're thinking. Please come.
Hello, my name is Hannah Sapolsky. I'm in fourth grade, and I think that we should have a basketball court at Blackie's pasture. Because you can do other things at a basketball court than play basketball. Basketball's good for kids, and it strengthens physical fitness, mental agility, and so much more. These are some reasons why we should have a basketball court at Blackie's pasture. You can do so many different things at a basketball court, like start a band, meditate, ride your bikes, or scooter when nobody else is around. If you want to do something like that, but somebody else is already playing basketball, then you could either play, play basketball with them or watch. It's your choice. Another reason we should have basketball, a basketball court, is because basketball's good for kids. It is a team sport, so it teaches social skills, teamwork, and communication. It also, basketball is also good because it helps burn calories, develops strength and coordination, and requires quick split-second decisions. All in all, basketball's a good sport, and we should have a basketball court at Blackie's pasture.
Thank you very much. Further public comment?
Hi, my name is Maya Campadonica. I'm in fourth grade, so of course I have a lot of energy like some of the other kids here. So us kids need a place to run around besides the field. Why not the field? Well, because there is at least some activity on the field, so we usually don't want to interrupt. The basketball court, on the other hand, well, yes, of course, there might be a few games, but imagine the days that there would not be any games. Plus, you could do so many other activities aside from basketball, like play tag or have a pizza yoga session or meditate. You can do almost anything with an open space. This is why we should have a basketball court at Blackie's.
Hi, my name is Levi Moore. I'm a second grade grader at Reed School. A basketball court would be a great addition to our parks. Number one, I like this because I love basketball. Number two, it's my favorite sport, and I love it so much.
Is there any further public comment?
Yes.
Fairhearted. And I, I'm in fifth grade at Bella School. I think it is a good idea to have a basketball court at Blackies pasture because it would look good in the empty space. Also, if there is a basketball court, children can play other games than basketball, like tag or yoga. I strongly believe that there should be a basketball court at Blackies.
Let's see, do I see someone else coming up? Any further comment? Is that a yes, a no? No. Thank you very much. Thank you for your participation. I want you to understand that what we're doing at this particular juncture is not approving individual recreation activities. We're merely looking at a plan so that we can be organized and look at the broad spectrum of what we might be able to do and what is most feasible. However, your input is really valuable and it's in the public record now and I would like to thank you for coming as we move on to the rest of the agenda.
And I, I think Mayor Fredericks, this is our mayor, she's our mayor, everybody. I think we have some town council members in the future, don't you? I think we do. So, you guys, you have to now think about running for office. You're never too young and we will all help you do that, right, Mayor Fredericks?
Well, you are too young. There's actually.
Not too young to think about it is what I meant. Never too young to think about it.
Too many lawyers on the council. So I, I, I would like again to thank you and let you go before your mother calls me up and scolds me for keeping you up late. Terrific. All right, we move now to the more formal parts of considering an agenda item. And I think it would be a good idea to start with a staff report. And not in the dark either.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow council members and members of the public. This evening, WRT will be presenting a final draft of Tiburon's first Parks and Recreation Master Plan to Town Council here for adoption. This will include reviewing a list of final proposed changes developed by the Post Commission at their last meeting in October, which are included in the agenda as Exhibit Three and also additional WRT recommended changes that were included as Exhibit Four. So this evening, staff is recommending Town Council to receive the presentation from WRT, accept public comment and adopt the proposed Tiburon Parks and Recreation Master Plan either as proposed or with any amendments agreed to by council. Or if council is not prepared to adopt the, the plan at this time, provide staff with what additional information or actions are needed before bringing the matter back to council at a future council meeting. So we have Peter Winch here with WRT. I will let him introduce his team. They have been working on this plan feverishly for a little over a year and a half. Lot of public input, lot of public comment. I want to thank our Post Subcommittee that was part of input on this, Chuck Hornbrook and Angela McInerney and also our Town Council Subcommittee, Councilmember Jack Ryan and we did have Councilmember Holly Thier and Councilmember Isaac Nick Farr also as part of this. So I want to thank both Town Council and the Post Commission and also, most importantly, the, the residents and members of the public for all of their input for this very successful plan that will build the future of the Parks and Recreation System here in Tiburon. So I'll move the mic over to Peter and he can introduce his staff and start with the presentation.
Thank you, David and Council and members of the Post Commission and members of the Tiburon community. It's good to be back. We've heard tonight, I think, already, kind of a nice encapsulation of why Parks and Recreation and open space matter to all of us. And just that nice balance, I mean, already reflected tonight between the sort of the way we prize our passive open spaces for creating that sense of place that we treasure. And also the way we value spaces that can accommodate recreation for physical health and mental agility, I think I heard. Courts that can be used for multiple recreational activities. Those kinds of things that sustain our health and also have the potential to bring us together as a community. And I also want to say this Parks and Recreation Master Plan I'm observing tonight is part of a legacy of, an ongoing legacy of thinking about and preserving and enhancing our public space on the peninsula. So we are in that tradition and this is a good opportunity, a special moment to take this plan hopefully across the finish line or somewhere close to it. So, yes, we started this process, I think at the beginning of, of 2023. Post Commission advocated for and Town, and Town Council initiated a Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the idea was to step back from the day to day decision making around specific elements, maybe a basketball court, for example. And think about it holistically. Think about this system of Parks and Recreation holistically. So that's what we've done and we will summarize the plan tonight. And we will summarize that plan as it was presented to the Post Commission in October 1st. So I want to make sure that that's clear. The way we're presenting it is the same plan that, that Post Commission heard last month, though we have received more comments and though Post Commission made motions recommending certain changes to that plan, we will start just to provide that, that grounding and continuity. Then we will introduce the recommended, the, the motions that Post Commission made and the, and the approach that we recommend taking to, to address those recommendations. And then, as David said, some additional recommendations. I want to acknowledge Olivia Grenzewak and John Gibbs, my team with WRT and, and David and Jessica from The Ranch and the Post Commission and Council for just your commitment to the plan and, and more than, more than any of that, members of the public who we've seen again and again come back and be part of the process. So, thank you. I think I'll sort of skip past this because we, we spoke broad brush about the process, but where I like, what I like about this diagram is the arrow and where it's located. So, yeah, we've had some nice community events. We've been out in the community at Friday Night on Main, two Junes in a row. We took a beautiful walking tour in September of 2023 and, and brought the community along with us in imagining what the Richardson Baylinial Park could be like in the future, imagining it as it is, envisioning recognizing it and enjoying it as it is, but also imagining what could change. We had a couple of workshops in this room as well as virtually and along the way, just heard a lot of comments from a lot of members of this community. We were last here with this body in August, August 21st. And the comments that we got are summarized on this slide. I don't want to go into them in detail, but just to, just to remind us what we heard from you last time. We were asked to flesh out the executive summary to explain the process for evaluating projects, including things that we haven't specifically considered, to enhance the treatment of potential effects on neighbors, for example, traffic and noise, to define the regulatory or legal context at Blackies pasture, to suggest a mechanism for refreshing the community priorities that are defined in the plan, to be more, to, to scale back the recommended, we had, we, we included some diagrams of, of how parks could be in the future, scale those back, be more judicious, that less is more. But also to remove those concept diagrams or to move them to, to an appendix in the plan, recognizing that we're not, the council wasn't ready to endorse a specific outcome at the Richardson Baylinial Park. To make sure that we address safety and sanitation as those concerns had come up among members of the public, that we should make accessibility fundamental, that we should acknowledge the Martha property and set the stage for incorporating it into the open space network and that we should better frame the demographics of this community, recognizing that, that while projections based on past trends show slow growth, we're also, we also do have a general plan with a housing element that could accommodate substantial new development. So now I'm going to walk through the draft plan and try to not belabor it because you've seen this already and there will be opportunities for questions and as they come up. The structure of the plan is an executive summary in Chapter One and then Chapter Two is a summary of what we learned about this place, the park system and the people. Chapter Three summarizes our community engagement process and the feedback that we got from the community. And then what that meant in terms of guiding principles that were established for the plan and specific recreation amenity priorities based on the community feedback. Chapter Four introduces what we're calling Park Character Areas and Improvement Recommendations for Specific Sites. Chapter Five looks at costs and funding and Chapter Six wraps it up with a decision-making framework, sort of summarizes all of that into a series of tables that hopefully will be useful in making decisions in the future. So we'll walk through it briefly. Executive Summary makes the following, identifies the following key recommendations for the plan, sort of to boil it down, to distill to some, to some key recommendations. We are recommending that Tiburon continue to provide a satisfying and tranquil experiences of the natural setting. That we provide more recreational opportunities for all, from young children to teens to active adults and seniors and do that sensitively in the context of the specific character of specific sites. We recommend a focus on improving the condition of the small neighborhood parks and exploring the feasibility of providing an outdoor pool and more indoor recreation space. So, we've got little things, little parks that just a little bit can go a long way. And then we've also got potentially some bigger, bigger, more complex projects that we want to just recognize that there may be, that there's a desire for and that should be studied. We recommend creating better visibility and identity for the parks through signage, maps and online resources. Rededicating ourselves to partnerships with neighboring jurisdictions and organizations like The Ranch, The Library, the Town of Belvidere and others. These partners can provide water access, expand recreational opportunities and organize community events. And we recommend making enhancements to the Old Rail Trail and the San Francisco Bay Trail that go along the Richardson Bay Shoreline, including design changes and potential, potential adjustments to trail alignment where there is space, where it makes sense to make that experience more safe, more enjoyable for people riding bikes, walking, using the trail and, and the various ways that they use it. We recommend implementing improvements at Richardson Baylinial Park based on this plan that would integrate new active uses, maybe basketball courts, who knows, in balance with the natural environment and initiating public space enhancements and programming downtown. So looking at the Richardson Baylinial Park is a really key opportunity, but also recognizing that downtown has a fabric that recreational activities are already a part of and can become more of a part of over time. And then finally, enhance, enhancing the network of open space trails to give residents greater access to the great outdoors and integrating the Martha property as well, of course, as the Old St. Hillary's property that we're celebrating tonight. The plan introduces a decision-making framework. We're still in the executive summary, which has four components, a why, a what, a where and a how that help, that should, that is intended to give decision-makers a way to evaluate individual proposals that come before us. So the why is a set of guiding principles. The what is in a definition of what the community's recreation priorities are. The where is how to think about the specific considerations of sites. And the how is understanding what things costs, cost and what some potential funding mechanisms would be. Chapter Two, Place, Parks and Programs. First talks about, a little bit about, you know, who is Tiburon, who, who are we as a community? As I mentioned before, slow growth is represented in that top graph, but that bottom circular diagram is showing, well, we, we may grow, we may grow faster if, if that housing capacity of the housing element is realized. We have a community that has a balanced, balanced age population. And I think we've heard throughout the process, the importance of serving people of all ages and, and really creating multi-generational spaces where people can come together and recreate. Chapter Two also looks at the park system, identifies each site and, and the total amount of each type of amenity and the amount of acres of parks. And something that's interesting about this diagram is, and this is separates Tiburon from most communities, very, very different profile. Fifty-six acres of park space, not bad, pretty good park acreage ratio for this, you know, community of nine thousand people. But 1,811 acres of preserved open space, just a huge amount of preserved open space. And also a real wealth of trails, both paved trail along the, along the Richardson Bay Shoreline primarily, but also all the unpaved trails up in the hills. Just a really interesting profile of recreational spaces. And our focus in the plan is primarily on those fifty-six acres of park space. And so we want to recognize while there's ideas for activation and new amenities, those really are concentrated on a relatively small piece of art, you know, component of the community and is completely separate from all of that beautiful expanse of public open space where that kind of change is not contemplated. This map shows the park system, open space and, and parks along the shoreline. I won't belabor it, just a beautiful mosaic of parks, both in Tiburon and also connected to open space resources that are owned and operated by Marin County and others. Chapter Three, we look at community priorities. As I mentioned, there was a lot of engagement in the town over the last year and a half and we were able to talk with a lot of folks. We heard a lot about safety and comfort on the Old Rail Trail as well as at some of the recreation facilities, the playgrounds, the play surfaces, you know, concern about the, the, the play equipment, its condition. People were interested in more clarity, more access, better signage. That was also a theme. People were interested in the idea of a more connected system for walking and biking. People would love the idea of more access to water. Here we are in a peninsula surrounded by water almost, but it's sort of hard to actually have access into the bay and a swimming pool was also something that we heard a lot about. Natural character and the environment is such a big part of Tiburon's identity and that remained true as, you know, as we heard from, from members of this community. We heard about specific types of facilities like tonight we did about basketball, but at different points in the process, we heard about a whole range of different recreation amenities that people were interested in. And we also heard about activities, events and so on. Events, recreational programming, spaces for recreational programming that were needed to, that to support our recreational use. Out of that, we generated these lists of guiding principles, park experience, recreation amenities and park improvements, a principle around recreation programming, a principle for access and safety and a principle around environmental sustainability. Each of these has sort of subparts and, and we tried to just distill the key guidance that we heard from the community and that we understood based on studying this community that, that this plan should, should try to achieve. The plan also, based on the recreation, based on what we heard from the community, we were able to prioritize specific recreation amenities both through a statistically valid survey and also through community engagement. And we've had several conversations with this group about it, but the top amenities based on this process were playgrounds, kayak or SEP launch, multi-use paved and unpaved trails, a swimming pool, pickleball courts, open space and conservation areas, outdoor tennis courts, a community center and picnic areas and shelters. But this doesn't mean the plan is going to make all these things happen. And it doesn't mean that these are the only things that can take place in the next fifteen years. It's simply an expression of, these were at this time, the top community priorities. They all have maybe different costs associated with them, opportunities of specific sites. So it's a whole balance of things that go into that. That's why we have a decision-making framework. Yes.
Just a small question. On the next page, I, I think there are other, oop, it's not on here, but there were other priorities that were also, if you go back, there are other priorities that are also designated as medium. So for the picnic areas and shelters, I'm wondering, is there something that distinguished it from the other medium categories that
Yeah, good question.
To put it here or is it the same and you just included it?
Good question. There's a little bit of art and a little bit of science. Good question. There's a little bit of art and a little bit of science. This was elevated above some of the other mediums because it also is something we heard a fair amount about in the level of communities, the community engagement, we also heard about it. So it was medium in the in the survey, but we also heard about it more than we heard about some of the other medium rated items.
Okay, so but this page is in your judgment between the survey and the activities and communication from the public, this page represents the highest priorities of the community as far as you could
Correct.
determine. Okay.
So as long as we're asking questions, I was gonna wait till the end. You keep talking about a statistically valid survey. So, you know, some of the components are what your sample was stratified, random, representative. What was, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great, it's a great question. It's a it's a mouthful statistically valid survey. This was done in the summer of twenty twenty three. It was a survey that was mailed to every household, every residential address in the town of Tiburon. And in order to be statistically significant at a ninety fifth percentile threshold statistically, we needed a certain number and I'm sorry, I don't remember off the top of my head with a specific number of responses that we needed to get to achieve that level. And we got it and sailed, I think quite far above it because we also sent it to more every household in the community.
So the validity is based on the the number of responses, not the parts of the population they represent.
It's based on the number. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, chapter four, park character areas and improvement recommendations. We were asked, and this is sort of a unique aspect of this plan as far as parks and plans go in our experience, but to think about instead of instead of being really specific about where to place specific improvements, specific recreation amenities, to understand that every space is unique and what are the qualities that make every space unique? So we created this system of almost like zones. Though they don't have the legal authority of zones zoning districts in terms of land use. They do have that same concept of what is a, what is a areas of land that have commonalities, something in common. So we have this R one, R two, R three, R four, R five and E districts. And the they're basically organized in terms of, as you can see on the far right here, a level of activity that would be appropriate in each one. So the R one is where we would imagine there to be the most active recreation features, your sports courts and fields. Our two is what we're calling flexible and accessible. It's it's areas that are most easy to access for the broadest segment of the community where you'd want to have things that really serve the broadest segment of the community. Our three is what we're calling special recreation. It's kind of a unique, kind of quirky area where you have slopes. Maybe it's not sensitive, doesn't have sensitivity from a vegetation or habitat perspective. It may be kind of hard to put traditional recreation amenities there. We've assigned that to our three. Our four is for your kind of neighborhood park environment, more passive, individual sports courts, maybe a dog park. Things that you'd find in a in a small neighborhood park, that's what that's your R four district. Our five is really just for trails as they go through open space areas and E is where it's 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 a priority to conserve the ecological environment there. We also are making recommendations in the plan to for specific sites, but not going too, hopefully not going too far. So with Richardson Bay Lineal Park, there's a framework that the plan provides about what should take place there. And that includes that at Blackies pasture, that sea level rise adaptation and revegetation and habitat should be taken into consideration. And that natural setting needs to be protected and celebrated. But that we also are trying to, we also recognize the opportunity for that site to to enable greater enjoyment, more recreational use. Elements that would be carefully selected and cited that would appeal to a broad cross section of the community. At McKegney Green, we see that. And also when I say McKegney Green, I actually want to say also the sanitation pond site, which is a really important new addition of Parkland in Tiburon, which is right next to McKegney Green and shares some of the same qualities of McKegney Green in terms of its location. This is where we see the opportunity for some more active recreational uses. And then south of the Knoll, we have recommended based on a lot of feedback, improving the play area, improving improving the restrooms. Maybe there's some very sort of small around the margins, new recreational opportunities. But we really need to be attentive to maintaining the tranquil experience that is characteristic of that site today. We also want to try to advance the idea that the Bay Trail and the old rail trail and the network of trails in that site can be thought of in a new way. That there are some opportunities to better move cyclists and walkers through that space in a way that's going to feel safe and comfortable for everyone. So we have some ideas about potentially changing the alignment of the Bay Trail. Making the old rail trail perhaps feel slower, calmer, more pedestrian oriented in the park. The plan also presents some recommendations for downtown and including Tether Park. And that includes potentially. And again, I'm going to actually make a distinction here. This is the plan as it was presented to post commission. Post commission had some comments on this. So the plan as it was presented to post commission for Shoreline Park, we were saying, consider adding a sculptural play element and consider adding, consider adding a public restroom. You'll see in a minute that they they wanted us to take that scale that back. For Fountain Plaza, we we were recommending exploring using the parking along Tiburon Boulevard as to increase event space to create, allow that to be flexible event space. And then Zelinsky Park and Library Plaza, when we saw that as a real opportunity to create more activation, more community events, more things going on there. It's such an important sort of civic space. Tether Park has the potential to become a real gateway to the open spaces, old St. Hillary's and the Martha property up in the hill, connecting that to downtown, making this a gateway to the trail system. Also connecting to the bay. And potentially creating more green space there or potentially accommodating one of our bigger ticket items like a pool. This is a space that is right downtown, has pretty good access. Could be a candidate for potential change of recreational program. Looking at the smaller parks, Bel Air Park, the plan as presented to the post commission recommended improving site drainage, increasing maintenance and trash removal, adding gravel or DG walking path benches and a picnic table, adding landscape elements and signage and clear rules and regulations for dogs. Belvaren Mini Park, the plan recommends maintaining and enhancing the landscape and the trees, improving the entrance to make it more welcoming. This is a park that maybe a lot of people don't even know about. I find it very quite invisible. You pass by and you don't even know it's there. And maybe there's an opportunity to add something like a small bike loop or a learner path and maybe a playground. For Cypress Hollow Park, the plan recommends replacing and upgrading the play equipment, which is kind of tired out. It's been getting a lot of use from members from all over the community. Better separating the dogs and the playground, which right now there's some conflict, we understand, and restoring the lawn and improving maintenance. And then for the ranch at Derry Knoll, improving the building deficiencies, which were identified in this plan and are detailed in the facility assessment. For open spaces and trails, the plan recommends adding parking at key trail heads at Blackies pasture, the old rail trail and downtown. And the idea there is to concentrate that parking access really down along the waterfront where there is parking and marking on street trail segments in in many cases to help people navigate and connect and understand that they can actually get up to the ridge. And then also trying to better connect the the ridge top, the Tiburon Ridge Trail where there are opportunities.
I'm sorry, what what's the what's the additional parking at Blackies that you're thinking of?
Not additional so much as, well, I guess there could be additional parking at Blackies. I think there may, that may make sense in the context of providing more other recreational elements there as well. But it's about providing, recognizing Blackies pasture and the parking there as a as as a as a way to support use of the open space and trails.
Okay, I'm just not clear what the change is. I'm trying to zero in on what that means.
It's coming. We were gonna look at the gravel area that's not asphalted and and asphalted to maximize the amount of parking we could have there.
Okay, so it's sort of improving the existing law.
Exactly.
Chapter five, cost and funding. It, we look at capital costs, which is how much it costs to build things and lifecycle replacements, which is how much it costs to and how often we need to replace equipment in the parks. But that's not where cost ends. And so this is the concept of total cost of ownership. Where you look at the cost to build, but you also look at the cost to operate and maintain. And so that's what this chapter is trying to do, pull that all together. We do just rough order of magnitude. These costs are going to be so dependent on the specific choices made in any design. So it's very hard to put a lot of stock in them. But we also want to give give enough of a sense of like range of kind of rough order of magnitude. Here's what it's going to cost maybe to build a nice new playground or just a swing set. Or here's what it might cost rough order of magnitude to build and operate a pool. And the chapter looks at funding strategies in a variety of categories and then identifies the ones that maybe have the most relevance for the town of Tiburon. The decision making framework, chapter six, lists all of those same recreation amenities that we showed on the table before. And then makes them into a matrix so that you can see how do those amenities relate to the why, the what, the where and the how of the plan? How do they connect with the guiding principles? Are they a community priority? What is our rough order of magnitude cost estimate? And what are the areas in the park system that are most appropriate for them? The plan makes improvement recommendations by site. We've walked through those already, but here they are in tabular form. And that's the end of the presentation of the plan as we presented to post commission. And I appreciate everyone's time and attention. I know this is a long presentation. I'm 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 going to take a pause and then we can continue on and look at the recommended changes from post commission.
I actually have a question. So in the appendices, you also have recommended changes?
Uh, no.
Yeah. Okay, because I do see recommendations in the appendices.
We have exhibits, exhibits were prepared for this meeting that summarize the recommended changes to the plan. Maybe that's what you mean.
Well, I'm looking at the appendices and it talks about Derry Knoll. It has a bunch of recommendations under the facilities assessment. There's actual recommendations. It starts on page eighty one of the appendix. Where you look at all the facilities and there's recommendations about each one.
Yeah, we weren't we weren't anticipating revisiting any of that analytical background work for the plan. But if there's something in particular that you think is needs to be changed, I want, I think we need to just understand that.
Okay, you want to talk about that now before you do these recommended changes or?
I would leave that to council to.
I think, so I think before we give direction to staff, we usually go through the rest of the process and bring it back for discussion.
Yeah, he's done with it now, though. He's done with the presentation.
Well, actually, he has.
No, there's more. There actually is more. We have, I'd like, I want to, I want to go through the recommended changes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Great.
I wanted to just give you guys a chance if you wanted to stop me because I just felt that it might be timely.
Great. So are you taking a break or?
I'm happy to continue. I just want to, shall I continue and finish the presentation?
I think we're in agreement that you should.
Okay, good. Thank you. I will. So here we are. So the post commission heard this plan in October last month. And they made this series of motions to all read them. Their motions were to remove, remove the reference to adding restrooms at Shoreline Park. To add a dog park in one of the R designations to help us with their planning, help us plan a dog park. To change the priority list from A B C to N S T. That means that we had identified this series of types of improvements to parks as A necessary, B strategic and C transformational. But I think that their 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 comment here is that it using an A B C seems to suggest a prioritization. And it's not intended as a prioritization. So they they liked the idea of a different letter coding system. They made a motion to add satellite imagery or just better geographic information on one of the maps. They made a motion to add shoreline access to both figure twenty eight and to the other figure in chapter two for overall on the Tiburon Peninsula. So they wanted to make sure that we are able to see existing shoreline access and shoreline access opportunities on the maps. They made a motion to note on the trail maps where trailheads have parking versus just trailheads. And they finally made a motion to focus the list on easy wins and other components versus an exhaustive list of all the things we could possibly do.
Okay, I do have questions on this. So the R designations, where would that actually be? Which exhibit are they referring to so we can see it?
This is the the plan, the map in the plan that is called park character areas. I don't know what.
Do you have a page?
I'll go back to it. Eighty two? Page eighty two in the draft plan.
Okay.
I'll show it here just for reference. There, that one.
You have a bigger version of that map that we can look at?
Yeah, I can't read it.
I don't have it in this presentation, but it is in the plan itself, which is an exhibit, I believe, to your packet.
Okay, and then the then I had a question about the last comment that the last suggestion, when you say when they ask to focus the list on easy wins and other components versus an exhaustive list of all the things we could possibly do? Are they saying to take out the community, take the, remove the community's recommendations from the plan?
I interpreted this to mean they saw a long list of 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 recreation amenities that the plan could do. And there was a desire to also, not instead of, but in addition to that, focus attention on some things that can really be done, some concrete actions, and that that would be priorities.
Maybe it's an and not a versus.
So I'm wondering if, I think it would be helpful to me at this stage, if you go to the page with the the map with the R one, R two, R three that was, I commented if it could be bigger. Can you, for the parts that are basically from south Knoll to Blackies? Could you verbally describe the geographic area that each of these things covers? Like, in other words, I'm looking at the at the R two, you know, that's right by I'm trying to figure out how far down the R one goes. Is that including McKegney Green? Does that stop at at the Knoll? Can you, can you give us just kind of a verbal description of?
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to orient us. So what we're doing is we're focusing on the Richardson Bay Lineal Park, which is the area that has the most colors on this map, the the most vibrant palette of colors. A lot of diversity of colors in there because it's a site that has different character areas within it. So the R one is that darkest orange area. And it is being applied to McKegney Green and the sanitation pond site. And kind of snaking down toward into Blackies pasture a bit as well, sort of.
So can you, yeah, so.
In front of the restrooms where the paths are, where it's kind of flat and yeah.
So it's kind of like the the very at the very top of the R two section, is that the sort of grassy area below the overlook from the Tressle park? Is that what that is?
Is that, I'm sure it's the question.
So the idea is that this R two area, which is intended to be somewhat, you know, the one of the most active includes McKegney Green, the sanitation park and then wraps around. includes McCaugney Green, the sanitation park, and then wraps around
The lower, sort of the lower part uh below the restrooms, below that bluff, below the um, the trestle, yeah.
Okay, and if I can ask, you know, I, I think there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about McCaugney Green and the sanitation ponds, but I haven't heard much discussion about what could be, what kind of things you guys are contemplating in terms of what, what could be put that, you know, at the, the part that's closer to the road. I mean, that's kind of open space right now because it's totally visible and it's a hill. Uh, I'm just not sure what we would put there.
Yeah, the hill, so that yellow, that sort of pale yellow color is, is, is the R, is the R three zone. That's, that's being applied to the hill. That kind of comes down um, from the trestle at that point.
Right, and that's the part that you said was unusual because it was hilly or.
Geography and yeah, couldn't do a sort of traditional recreation things, but could do something like a slide or, or something.
Can I have one, one clarification on, on the actual, on the actual proposal, proposed master plan that you, you showed post? On page eighty-six of that, not of your presentation, but of the actual post, there is a slightly different diagram. And it is definitely much more clear than the one that's up on the screen. Is there any way we can switch to that? And can you, because that one has a different identifier for that exact space that council member Wellner is talking about?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
It's page eighty-six.
Eighty-six of the actual presentation.
The actual, the actual plan?
Yeah, I think I'm on that, right?
It makes a scene to me.
Inconceivable.
Inconceivable.
Well, it does.
Uh, it's AI two exhibit one.
Ja- uh, Jack, do you mean eighty-seven? Eighty-seven's a zoomed-in version of eighty-six.
Looking at exhibit one.
This, is it not consistent?
Where is it? I saw it. Maybe it is eighty-six.
I, I don't, I don't know what I'm looking at, but I have. Yeah, I, that's.
Oh, yeah, no, you're, you're at eighty-six.
Eighty-six on mine.
Eighty-seven's zoomed in, eighty-six.
No, eighty-six is it?
On mine, eighty-six.
On mine, it's eighty-seven.
Well, I will tell you what it is. It is the eighty-seventh page of the presentation, but it is labeled page eighty-six.
Yes.
There lies the description.
And you can see that like there's that R five in that.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, yeah, that actually is different from the other one.
Sorry, it sounds like I, I think you've identified an inconsistency and I think I would go with the detail map that was more, that I think is more updated.
It wasn't inconsistent.
Oh, it wasn't?
The document versus the page number.
No, that's not what he's saying. It's, it's a different map than the one that's small.
Okay.
Because, yeah, so that area.
Is in fact differently shaped, right?
Right. Yeah. And it, and it's more consistent with council member. While there's point that that area doesn't seem like it should be.
Right, that's why it's R three.
Yeah, exactly.
That makes, that makes more sense to me, yeah.
Well, it says R five here. Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's really, that's good. Appreciate the scrutiny of it.
It's the eighty-seventh page labeled page eighty-six.
It's almost right.
There we go. That's it. There we go.
All right. Okay, this will be helpful.
Okay, so where are we? Still asking questions?
All right, yeah, so no, if you could just walk through the different thinking here. So R five are the preserved areas, right?
Right, R five are ec- E is the ecological preserved areas. R five is really just appropriate for maybe a trail in a natural context.
Quiet, okay.
R four is your very passive neighborhood park-ish environment. Maybe there's a playground or an individual sports court, um, a picnic area, but it's not an active use sporty area.
Okay, and then.
And you can see that at a lot of the south of the Knoll. Then you have R three, which is the quirky sloped portion of the park. Up to the old rail trail, including the old rail trail. Then you have R two, which we're calling flexible and accessible, and that's the, that's the area right around, right? It's the heart of Blackie's pasture.
Oh, so that's, that's your, that's kind of your special designation for the Blackies area itself, right?
I think it also applies to Tether Park downtown, which we also I didn't recognize as, or that may be an R one, I can't remember now. Maybe that's an R one. But our, but our two, its key characteristic is it's got great access for the whole community. And it's, um, it's a place where we wanna make sure that the community benefits.
Okay, and is there, I'm sorry to ask this level of detail, but is there a reason that the R two, some of the R two is just orange and some of it's orange with diagonal stripes?
Uh, the diagonal stripes, I think, indicates a parking opportunity, but now I can't see that diagonal stripes.
It's like shading.
And it's almost a hole.
You can't really see it up there, but if you look at, yeah, okay. So yours is saying that we can pave Blackies and turn it into a parking lot?
No, that's definitely not the intention.
John.
I'm just thinking of that song. Yes, exactly.
For parking lot. So, so this really is some kind of a key to the characteristics of the site that suggests what their uses might be?
Correct.
This is like the zoning that we were talking about.
It's like zoning, except it's not in stone.
Yeah, right. Yep. Correct.
It's a concept.
Okay, and, and.
Yeah, so.
All right, so R two is super accessible and R one is kind of the active. That's what the kind of distinction is that you're making?
Yeah.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. And I'm sorry, what, can you, can you zero in on the difference between R four and R five? I'm just looking at the south of Knoll area.
Yeah, R four is where you would see some level of recreational features, like the playground, uh, the picnic area that are already there.
It's like it's already there, yeah, okay.
Um, and R five is really more, you recognize it as a, as a space to enjoy in its open quality.
Got it.
All right, just uh, for the audience's benefit, I'd like to point out that we're at the part of this agenda item where the council is asking questions for clarification and following this will have public input.
And then I, I have another question. So on this diagram, everything that would be an R one or an R four, host is recommending could be a dog park? Is that right?
Oh, what post their motion was to, they, they saw that dog parks weren't speci- weren't called out in our table of typical uses for any of the zones. So they wanted us to make sure that, that the dog parks would be included um, in that table so that there would be good guidance for decision-makers about where they belong.
Right, not to put them everywhere, but that there are possibility in these places.
Exactly.
All right, are there further questions?
But, but R, R one would be McCaugney Green, right? Because dogs are prohibited right now on McCaugney Green.
Um, they just said find a plate, they didn't specify in their motion where, which zones, but they just wanted to make sure that there was a zone or maybe more than one zone where dog parks would be appropriate.
So then maybe, um, because, d- does R one include McCaugney Green? I think it does.
R one includes McCaugney Green, yes.
Okay, and David, are dogs still prohibited on McCaugney Green? Yes. So perhaps R one is not um, an appropriate place? Or perhaps you put parentheses in the plan and say, except where dogs are expressly prohibited? Uh, because, because you don't wanna create a plan that's inconsistent with our other um, rules.
Yeah, it's a good point.
John, are you revving up?
I am revving up. I, I just, I don't, I don't wanna stop him from going through the recommendations that post made, but I think one thing that, another kind of glaring issue that's kind of, I, I could use some explanation about, about is, uh, you know, I saw the, the ideas about changing the way old rail trail is organized in terms of bikes on one part and pedestrians on another, something like that. But I don't think I've, I've ever had it fully explained to me this idea of reorienting, reorienting the, this, you know, adding this new SF Bay Trail and what the reasoning is behind that. Could you spend a minute?
Yeah, maybe we wanna look at, if, if we can, look at a different diagram.
That's a different diagram.
Presentation back on the screen, I'm sorry.
I think that's actually page ninety-four, yeah.
Um, yeah, so this is coming from the observations that we heard from members of the community that um, there are speed, there are high speeds on the, on the old rail trail right now that make some, some users not feel safe or comfortable. Um, and there is, potentially there's space here, not everywhere on the old rail trail, but definitely in this part of it to, um, because there is another parallel trail that goes closer to the shoreline that's not currently part of the San Francisco Bay Trail. So, oh, let me back up here too. San Francisco Bay Trail is a recent, regional designation that is applied to portions of the old rail trail today. It, it, it goes through Tiburon on the old rail trail. And we were seeing the opportunity, and this is, this is again, not a mandate, but an opportunity to reroute, to realign the San Francisco Bay Trail so that it, it takes a different route through the park, perhaps closer to the shoreline, and allows the old rail trail. It may still allow bikes. Bikes may still be part of the picture there, but the trail would be designed and experienced to be a slower, more pedestrian-oriented space.
So what you're saying is that the portion of the old rail trail that is to the, to the left uh, of, south of Knoll Field.
Yeah.
That currently is part of the SF Bay Trail, but you're saying you would, you would recommend taking that portion off to slow it down and take, and having the SF Bay Trail take this other route?
Yeah.
Um, and then does it current, where does it then go? Does it go to uh Greenwood?
It does today end up, it goes down to Blackie's pasture and then it connects to Greenwood Beach Road.
Okay.
And they have their own issues with. That's another issue, I think.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so then we'd be diverting the, the fastest bikes over to Greenwood Cove? Greenwood Beach.
They're already going through there. It's just.
No, I, I know they are, but, but this would formalize it?
I'm sorry?
This would be something that would formalize it, basically, having the faster bikes go through Greenwood Beach Road.
No, this would be separate from that issue, I would say. I think it's just, um, and I think that issue, there's some good potential for that to be addressed through the changes that are underway for the, is it northern or is it?
Yeah, we're gonna be adding class four bike lanes.
Exactly.
But that's, that's why I'm wondering. I also uh, think that one of the recommendations was to get rid of this from post. Um, and I think that may be part of the reason, so with the class four bike lanes, we're not gonna need to try to bifurcate the trail. But go ahead, David, you're gonna say that.
Yeah, that is a vice versa there. So what this plan, what the suggestion here is to bring the fast cyclists instead of riding their bikes above McCaugney Green and coming around that sharp curve to just separate them so they're they go down through the gravelled area and reconnect where uh, the Richardson say, Richardson Bay Sanitary Pond areas, the entrance to their district. So it'll just, it's a small little bypass and they all kind of end up in the same spot. But not put the fast uh cyclists on top where we have soccer and lacrosse and kids crossing back and forth.
So this doesn't affect the Greenwood uh, Beach Road?
No, because in the end, they will all end up in the same spot, right there uh, by the ponds.
Yeah, I think the class four uh, project, um, I think that ends, that goes all the way from one oh one to um, the Trestle Glen intersection, but maybe not beyond that. So that's why this would still be an important piece.
All right, any further comment, questions? This is question time. I'm seeing none. Would you like to continue with your report, please?
Sure, yeah, let's get that presentation back. Again, appreciate all the patience of members of the public, a lot of material to get through. Um, so, yeah. Yeah, let's get back to the end of the presentation. Okay, oh yeah, all the way down. You're going the right direction. Yeah.
The slide that you just showed us with the, with the bikes and the, what, what slide number was that?
It was in the plan itself. I believe it was page ninety-six.
Okay. Okay.
Or ninety-four.
Page ninety-four?
I mean, it's numbered page ninety-four, but it might be the ninety-sixth page. I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, so continuing on the presentation. In response to the post commissions, I'm gonna back up one slide just to get us back to that uh, motion. In response to the post commission's motion to focus the list on easy wins and not just an exhaustive list of all the things that we could possibly do, um, this is a recommended change where we would introduce, we would identify a list of potential early actions. And those would be a Parks and Open Spaces map and online information about recreation opportunities that provide a clear orientation to what Tiburon has to offer. New or upgraded playgrounds, these could be at Cypress Hollow Park and south of the Knoll, where we have those playgrounds, and maybe a new playground at Zelinski Park. A welcoming entry and improvements at Belveron Mini Park.
Uh, can I ask a question? Um, I thought we got an email from staff that uh, we were going to refer to this rather than as a mini park, uh, as a play area, as it's designated um, in the, in the subdivision maps that were approved, yeah.
I think that you're referring to Bel Air, not Belveron.
That's right.
So.
That's right.
Okay, so yeah, so those are, so.
And there it is. It's still, yeah, and there it is. You changed it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So um, e- exploring improvements at Bel Air Play Area based on additional community input. Temporary low-cost improvements like lawn, and that's already happening, I understand. Uh, maybe some furnishings, maybe there's some activation opportunities to allow casual community use at the sanitation pond site, even before we can spend, even before we're gonna figure out long-term, we can start to let people enjoy that site. Um, a welcoming gateway to the trail system at Tether Park and associated trail and signage improvements. A signage and wayfinding plan. Identifying kayak SUP water access points in partnership with property owners and/or the town of Belvidere.
So I have a question about that too. In twenty thirteen, uh, the council actually did some studies on that. Do you have the access to those rather than hiring a consultant again to look at the same?
Yeah, we did, we did look at those for sure. Um, I think it's just a matter of now getting, I think the idea here is what can we do beyond that, having that study to actually realize the potential of that study and make something happen?
Yeah.
Okay, I, it's just that some of the variables mentioned in it have, have not changed. It'd be great if there's good insight um, and some suggestions, yeah.
Jerry Reason has some free time to, to pursue this.
Things have opened up.
We're gonna put Jerry on it.
Um, okay, convene.
It's great, but it might take forty years.
Oh my God, John and Jack are on fire tonight.
Okay, um, we'll restrain ourselves. Please continue.
Okay, you have a, you have a, you have a new project. Um, convene partner organizations that conduct events on the peninsula and create a revitalized calendar of events that make use of downtown's public spaces. Expand access to pools and consider a swimming pool feasibility study. Begin to implement improvements at Richardson Bay Laniel Park based on this plan.
Okay, so um, I'm not sure if we're supposed to make some comments now.
No, it's after public comment. This is questions from the council to clarify.
I have, I have a, I have a question.
No, it's gonna be a comment.
No, it's, it's in the form of a question. Which is, I, 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 I do love this list, uh, except I question whether or not the swimming pool bullet is a potential early action. That sounds like a longer project to me. Is it, does, does that, does it make?
Guess what I would say is the, there, the next step to considering a pool would be, as we understand, it would be a feasibility study. And so the next step, the, the easy win or the, or the short-term thing is not having the pool, but taking the next. And so the next step, the, the easy win or the, or the short term thing is not having the pool, but taking the next step.
So, but what does the expand access to pools mean?
I think the expand access to pools is what can we do, if anything, and I'm not sure that this has really got meat on the bone, but there is the strawberry pool, there's the Tiburon Peninsula Club, there's Mill Valley. Is there anything that can be done to expand Tiburon residents' access to those facilities?
To existing pools, okay, alright.
Do you have a question? Um, yeah, so in the first uh item onto the to-do list, a Parks Open Space Map and Online uh information about recreational opportunities. So this is something that's been proposed before. And um what would be great is to have it interactive so that people, there's a map and people can actually click onto a specific park and see what's there, see what's available. Um, because I think that would, would really help people uh know where to go and what they can find there and really open up our open spaces and uh parks. Okay, so hold that suggestion to when it comes back to council, um, so we don't forget it. Are there any further actual questions? Is there is there further reporting from the staff?
We've just, we do have a couple more slides if you bear with me. Okay, other potential changes. These are things that we identified as cleanup items. Uh, in the executive summary, we felt that it would be good to add a short summary of the planning process. Right now, there's the, the gra, the schedule graphic, but it's not really explained, so I think it would be helpful for posterity to just document that process very briefly in the executive summary. Second, um, to add a, a page or maybe a spread that frames why parks and open spaces are valuable for this community. That's kind of a fundamental thing. We'd love to have that in the plan. Um, in chapter two, place parks and programs, there's a sidebar in that chapter um called Other Providers, and it just summarizes some of the recreation amenities and programs that Tiburon residents have access to nearby. And we wanted to add to that something that we got wind of a little bit late, which was a low income swim program that we're in, that's run in Mill Valley. In chapter three, Community Vision and Priorities, there's a summary of an engagement exercise that we did with the community where we tested specific ideas and got feedback on those ideas. And when I read that, I don't think it's super clear where the ideas that we tested and, and where community feedback on those ideas begins, and I want to make that a little bit more clear. In chapter four, the Park Character Areas and Improvement Recommendations, we're recommending that R1, the Active and Recreational Area should um also refer to the Sanitation District Site, um make that really clear, and that add dog parks as a typical use at that site. And I think, yeah, we heard an important point that there should be some exceptions to that. Um, in the R2 District, Flexible and Accessible, that typical use, typical uses should include open lawn slash multi-use field instead of flexible event lawn multiple, multi-use field. That it should include playgrounds, but not destination playgrounds. That should include small amphitheaters, not amphitheaters, which is what it says now. And that it should include picnic areas and shade structures. And in the R.
Wait, what is the difference between playgrounds and destination playgrounds?
Just in terms of language, we felt that destination playgrounds can, it, first of all, it's not well-defined and that it seems to invite images of something that could be larger than what Tiburon residents maybe want.
Got it.
Again, just a recommendation for your consideration.
These recommendations from Post?
No, I've moved now past the Post. There were just those motions that we got from Post. These are now some other changes that I'm calling cleanup items. Um, actually, that, this, this particular one is coming from the Post recommendation to find a plate, to make sure that dog parks are reflected in typical uses in these zones, but as we looked at that, we also felt like there was some additional cleanup that could be done.
So basically, the first draft said destination playgrounds and you want to change it to playgrounds. Okay, I understand, thank you.
Yep. And then in the R4 District, um to include dog parks and off-leash dog areas as typical uses there as well. We also um uh wanted to make sure that we would specify, and this was coming from guidance from you earlier, that high-use recreation facilities like a swimming pool or a gym would require vehicular access and parking, just to make that clear. Um, to update the trail cross-sections and the intersection details, we looked at that, we looked at that intersection detail for a little bit, uh when we were talking about the trail. Um, and we feel that we can make that cross-section and that diagram more successfully convey the idea that we're trying to get across about creating through design and through alignment, creating a safer and more comfortable trail environment. Um, we wanted to add a recommendation for a playground to be a, a possibility at Zalinski Park.
Um, uh, with respect to the playground at Zalinski Park, my understanding is that that's an accessible playground. So I think the word accessible before it would be good.
Okay, yep.
Alright, that's where it's.
This is time for the report and questions about the.
Um, and then in to indicate additional recommendations for downtown, that we should explore potential kayak SUP launch locations and that we should explore opportunities for indoor recreation space that could be delivered as part of private development. That these locations should be shown on the Public Space Opportunities diagram downtown. And that we could remove that we, we had included paseos and rain gardens and a path at Railroad Marsh on that diagram, and that we would remove those because those were not things that got a lot of public um support. Um, that we would incorporate community input and recommendations for the Bel Air Play Area. Um, that for Cypress Hollow Park recommended, uh would recommend fencing the playground rather than fencing the dog area. And that we would, that would, we would move the recommendations for the ranch to a new subsection of the document called Recreation Facilities. Right now, it's grouped along with the downtown improvements and it actually doesn't quite fit there because the ranch isn't downtown.
I'm sorry, could you just go back one second and can you explain that top uh bullet point about the Bel Air Play Area a little more? What, what do you mean by that? And the reason I ask is because on your summary page of the Post recommendations, I thought the, the verbiage was really well-done and um for lack of a better word, neutral. And so what is so in the next slide, sorry. Like there you say, in the fourth bullet point down, explore improvements at Bel Air Play Area based on additional community input. But then in this slide, it seems like you're suggesting there's already been community input and you want to include it. So what, what, how do we resolve? Because I know there's clearly been community input, but um, but I don't think it's unexplored either. Or fully.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good question. I think maybe the way to go would be to use the same language in both cases and just use that explorer language here. Could be our response.
I'd like to point out that was a suggestion where it reports and questions.
Okay, we're almost done here. Costs and funding, um, we made a mistake in the Park and Trail Maintenance Staffing and Cost Table that we want to fix. Uh, we wanted to add a sentence or two about state and federal grants because that was something that came up in our last meeting, either here with Post, I can't recall, but want to make sure that it's spoken to in that table.
Um, under the costs and funding, I do have a question. Can you talk about how you estimated those costs?
Um, well, it was that I want to give some credit to a member of our team called MAC Five, um, they're an architecture group that worked with us um on the costing. Um, they use, um, they use the information that they have um from projects that they've worked on and other projects that they've, that they have collected information about to make rough order of magnitude estimates.
Okay, and I noticed there was some of that um in the appendices. But can you make sure that their cost analysis and what they based it on is clear? When you finalize this plan so that people would pick it up and say, okay, you know, the dog park would be twenty thousand dollars and, and the appendices would say, well, here's how we costed that out. We looked at these five dog parks and um compared them because it's similar and it's a similar community, that, that kind of analysis so that when somebody picks up this plan, they'll know exactly how things were costed out and what they were compared to. And, and that is a very good suggestion. I'd like to encourage the council though, just to ask questions because we have, I think a few members of the public who would like to speak and they're waiting. And we'll have an opportunity uh to actually make suggestions after public comment.
I think that's fine, although if they're small suggestions, it's easier just to do it while it's up rather than go through the whole list again. When it's.
Alright, so but even if you're right, I'll complain. So is there any any further staff report here?
We're.
That concludes the staff report. Are there any further uh questions or suggestions, guys, does, questions? Well, can we control ourselves to less of public input?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I would like to open um the agenda item now for comments from the public. Uh, please come forward, um make your comments, you have three minutes.
I'll get it going. Um, I'm Nancy Peterson and I live on Greenwood Beach Road. Um, and uh my comments focus mainly on the Richardson Bay Lineal Park. And actually are quite aligned with some of the questions and comments you've made today. Uh, first, we, we support moving forward Post's recommendation to do a more detailed master plan, or I think of more like a site plan for the Richardson Bay Lineal Park. I think a lot of the questions that come up, come up because it's conceptual and it's combination conceptual and detail, and as that's resolved, it will be clear what's gonna happen there. Such a plan would set priorities for the uses that are most versatile and uh make the area, the current character area that of that, I shouldn't say chara, character of the area that people love while I add to it. Um, it will also help, I, it would also help to assess Blacky's pasture uh designation. Uh, right now it's an R2, uh there have been suggestions to change the R2 designation that I think would be appropriate to remove the word destination playground, which would attract a lot of people. Um, we, you know, in our comments, our thinking about it, we also suggest that you might want to look at the R4 characterization for Blacky's pasture, that it might be more appropriate, but I think some changes. Uh, I think removing the destination playground, playground makes a lot of sense. Um, we're supportive of the notion of an adventure type playground or something in that, that could be in that area and fit in well with the uses. And I know a lot of other people support that. Um, we also support upgrades to the Old Rail Trail and the San Francisco Bay Trail, but suggest that the site plan go a little bit farther to include the proposed class four bike lane on Tiburon Boulevard. And really figure out how that's gonna connect with the Old Rail Trail or the Bay, or the SF Bay Trail. Um, I, I think the current recommendation is to connect that directly with the closest to the Bay, Bay Trail. Uh, and I think it might be worth considering whether or not it would be a more appropriate connection to run it on the Old Rail Trail up above and, and, and I'm very, I walk that trail a lot. And it's really not used very heavily and there's room to expand the size of it. So I think that's a suggestion to look at and think about. Uh, rather than bringing um the fast bikers, and it's gonna be more the fast bikers. Uh, I mean, you've certainly known and heard from us time and time again about our concerns about bicycles on Greenwood Beach Road, uh since it's been, recently been repaved and signed. We have faster, more fast groups. And it's a safety act issue for us as neighbors, it's a safety issue for pedestrians and dog walkers and for kids who ride to school there more and more. Um, so we really suggest that you read, that, that be looked at as part of this next stage of planning for Blacky's pasture and the whole lineal park. Um, we, we, we also strongly support all of the elements of the plans that foster nature and human connections to nature, particularly along the shoreline. Uh, we have a unique situation that we know that we have this incredible natural beauty and I'm out of time, I wasn't watching my time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth, I live in Tiburon. Um, I just want to say I'm really happy to hear that the Greenwood Beach residents are supportive of some very basic children play escape if it's um nature-y towards the parking area because that would just unlock so much joy and happiness. So I didn't see that when I read that letter initially, but I'm really happy to hear that, thank you. Um, so I'm Beth. I was gonna share with all of you my public comments so you could read it while I lighten the mood. I have a surprise. I'm cold too, sister. I swear, I just want everyone to see my green. So this was also in. But while you're reading that, in case you didn't really get a chance to look at it since there were over fifty comments, I'm gonna share a song that hopefully inspires all of us. And I know I felt um along the way that parents were parks and wreck, we've been really trying to listen to the neighbors and we're trying to move forward together to bring joy and community gathering together with, with all, with also respecting the beauty around, so enjoy.
This land is your land, this land is my land. From California to the New York island. From the redwood forests to the Gulf Stream waters. This land was made for you and me. As I was walking.
Alright, that did just bring some fun to the party tonight, since we're all gonna be here late, and thank you for reading my public comment.
Bring it on. Yes, more public comment, please.
Hi, my name's Sarah Reed. My life is Tiburon, I have three young children. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I have a quick question and, and it has to do with the two most recent comments. I noticed that R5 I think was the, the area near the parking lot closest to Beach Road, I think, on that map? Which would be like an obvious, like nature scape area. Does R5 preclude that from being that? I would have expected that would be like a me, like the R2 place.
I think, no, I think I know what you mean. The, the area closest to Greenwood Beach, um but closer to the parking lot, between the parking lot and Greenwood Beach.
Yes.
Yeah, we, I think saw that as being a more passive area for net, maybe there would be a nature loop, um kind of an interpretive loop, but more low-key, maybe not way, but what's, you know, the distinctions there start to be a little bit hard to read. I think that's where, you know, getting into the design process is gonna start to matter. Um, but definitely more, we're, we're reading that as a more passive, nature-oriented environment.
Just, uh, why? I guess it's like a big flat area.
Yeah, yes, that area there was, uh, bond money was used, nineteen seventy-two bond money was used for that, those two parcels. And that prohibits any type of, of recreational activity except passive, nature-based type.
Okay, so like a nature scape would be passivity.
Well, yeah, no structures, no playgrounds, it's, it's, it's all uh in that uh Bond Act that, that was used to purchase those, those two parcels down there.
Thanks. Uh, my other question is, I read in the ARC, the best publication ever, about the beaches being put in it to areas along Richardson Bay as part of the ecological restoration of Caltrans and they're paying for that. Does that factor into this plan? Well, can they be like used by people?
So the, the uh Beach Restoration Project is headed by uh Marin County. And actually tomorrow, uh, the State Conservancy Board will be awarding uh the grant money over one point four million dollars to cover the total construction cost of this grant. So that'll happen tomorrow. Uh, Roger Levenfall, Levenfall, who's the senior engineer and designer for this project, will be at that meeting tomorrow to uh provide comments and, and accept that grant. And this is mainly, i- i- it is a beach restoration, but first and foremost, it's, it's a sea level rise uh, uh, project. It's nature-based, meaning, uh, you know, the cobblestone will be removed. Um, uh, it is designed to where the wave action will not erode the area anymore. It will just take the material in and out. And yes, it will be much more usable than it is now, but uh they uh have been in contact. Uh, uh, the, the team that is designing the uh restoration project has been in contact with WRT throughout the whole process to incorporate trails and, and make it more usable. has been in contact with WRT throughout the whole process to incorporate trails and and make it more usable, and more paths will lead to it.
Great. I have no time left, so I will not say my next thing. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Bruce? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Abbott. I live on Greenwood Beach Road, and I've come here tonight to speak for the protection of Black East pasture in its present form and configuration and out of concern that it soon be rendered unrecognizable with the addition of activities not contemplated by anyone at the time of its creation. Black East pasture, as well as the Ridge Open Space in Tiburon, was created in nineteen seventy two by open space bond issue. With concerns by the public and the council, I walked that the all the open land, all the space in Tiburon would soon be gobbled up by developers, and they set about from that to back to create some open space. The the causes of such endeavor would be exceeded the statutory maximum that was allowed. So it turned to a bond issue. And the bond issue that was submitted by the by the council to the people with the contributions of various various committees in the of the town and the people read in its origin, Sheldon City of Tiburon incurred a bonded indebtedness for the acquisition of real property for open space, park, and recreational purposes. By reason of the concern for the word park might cause misconceptions that among Tiburon residents, that it would be equated with intensive structured use, the word park was stricken. So Black East pasture is not a park. If you, for verification, read this two eighty five, two eighty six, two eighty seven, of the nineteen seventy two council minutes. This was submitted to the voters. Two thirds vote required. It passed by a ratio of three to one. It created an obligation not on the town but on the voters, the taxpayers, who approved it, who paid for it, and for thirty years, over a period of thirty years paid for it, and who now expect the town to live up to their side of the bargain. Now, the contained in the the bond issue and in the deliberations in the council, where certain rules were identified. Among those are no intensive structured use. Land in its natural state. Passive use only. And I point out, these are not precatory words. They have meaning and they have teeth. And I bring to your attention two lead cases. Heave versus City of Los Angeles and O'Farrell versus County of Sonoma. In the first, to secure approval of a bond issue under one term and then issue bonds under another would be a fraud upon the voters. Two, O'Farrell. A taxpayer may enjoin an act exceeding the authority granted by the granted by the voters. The Tiburon Parks and Open Space, Tiburon Parks and Recreation Master Plan speaks of Black East pasture as a park. It is not a park. But it's the same concern that we had in nineteen seventy two, that it generates concepts among the people and and users that that is will contain intensive structured use. It cannot. It's bound by those basic rules that are identified in the council minutes in nineteen seventy two. No intensive structured use. Land in its natural state, passive use only.
Mayor, the time is expended. We should.
I beg your pardon?
Your time is up. Can you just wrap up quickly a couple of sentences?
Yes. I would urge the council as it proceeds to, if to extent you possibly can, not not to take action that will clash with the rules identified by the, from the town, from the council in nineteen seventy two, which still remain in effect.
Thank you.
As a Black East pasture.
Thank you. Further public comment. Thank you, Bruce.
I'm Nora Nogaz. I live in the Baylor section of Tiburon on Karen Way, as a matter of fact. I'm a mother and a grandmother, and I'm involved in the town, and I care very much about what happens here, and I'm very grateful to all of you for all your input and the work of WRT in putting together this presentation today. With regard to the top recreation amenity priorities, my question is sort of dovetails on what was already asked by the town council. But of a population of nine thousand one hundred twenty three, nine thousand one hundred twenty persons in twenty twenty three, what was the actual number of survey participants that responded that were the basis for creating these top recreation amenity priorities? And that's directed to WRT.
And and this is the, you're speaking of the statistically valid survey, how many respondents we had?
It's like two eighty. We needed two hundred and fifty to be to have that statistical validity, and we got four hundred and seven.
Okay, so I just wanted to know numerically, out of a population of nine thousand one hundred twenty people, the actual responses that were used to create that data were four hundred and twenty?
Four hundred and seven.
Four hundred and seven. Okay. Per household. Okay. All right. So I, as a taxpayer and resident, have problems with spending thirteen million to build a pool with an annual maintenance cost of two hundred seventy thousand dollars. I think sort of the utilitarian principle, which is the greatest good for the greatest number of people. One of the things I think that really need attention in this town are children's playgrounds. I think they're rundown. I think they need new equipment, and they need a lot of attention. I don't think it would be a good use of the fiscal, of the FISC to use it to buy a pool. Having had a pool at one time in my life, I know that it's great to have one, but the actual usage would be questionable, given our weather here. And there are already so many other pools. There's the TPC. There's a Belvedere Tennis Club. There's a Strawberry Rec Center, private pools, and the Mill Valley Rec Center. I think it is better to use the existing amenities than to try to create a new pool, especially in light of all of the problems that we have with upcoming climate issues, water shortages, droughts, and things like that. A lot of people are prohibited from putting in new pools in their own properties. So I don't think it would be a good use of our money to put a public pool into our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there further public comment?
Good evening, council members. Parker Pringle. Are we just asking questions of directing questions to these guys? Because, oh, see, Greg is shaking his head there. I would be asking Greg so many questions at this point. He knows that.
Usually in public.
That's a joke with Greg, so.
Public comment is for your comments. If you need more information, I really would encourage people to email staff before the meetings.
Yeah. Well, you save some time there, too. So anyways, I would suggest, this is late mail number twenty one. I would suggest switching from the ampersand to just an and in the plan name. Suggest adding a footer in the, on every page that includes the section and subsection numbers, and also the section and subsection titles. Just to make it easier to flip back and forth through the plan. Add page numbers for the subsections of the table of contents. Right now, there's, there's just page numbers for the beginning of each section. Just make it easier to flip through, through the stuff. Let's see here. Section, subsection three point one, it's a ten pages of narrative of how they got the information and all the data. I'd suggest consider making that an appendix, because the important stuff is the data that you that that was acquired. There's like ten pages of of all the background for how that was gotten. So I would suggest pushing that to the back. See here, Shoreline Park, get rid of the sculptural play element and the public restroom thing. And I'd suggest adding, that's page ninety six for the things to do. And I'd suggest adding signage, guiding visitors to the public restrooms near Sam's. And see here. For page one twenty six, which I think is the decision making framework thing, it's possible to put in page numbers to guide people to those guiding principles, recreation priorities, et cetera. That might be helpful. And the appendices could use their own pagination, like appendices one, two, three for each page. And then with a footer that tells you what document is in the appendix, or what appendix document you're looking at. Just make it easier to flip through this stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. There are further public comment. Yes.
Hi. I just want to thank everyone here for all of their great work on the master plan. I think this is a really exciting moment for Tiburon. I sent in a letter outlining some of my overall wishes for our town's park system.
Would you please introduce yourself if you feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah, my name's Jenna, and I'm a resident here.
Thank you.
And a parent. I really encourage you to adopt this master plan so we can get to work on improving our park system. Tonight, I just want to comment specifically on Bel Air Play Area, formerly Bel Air Mini Park, which is the neighborhood park near my home. I'm happy, I'm really happy to see it on the early action to do list. In recent years, in the view of many families in the neighborhood, this park has mostly been a lumpy, neglected lot filled with dog poop and prone to drainage issues. This is not a pleasant space to hang out in. Many families would like to use this space for play and for community building. And it's not really suitable right now for those uses. What we are asking for is mostly nice grass and a picnic table. I also personally would like to see an ADA compliant entrance to the park to ensure the space can be used by all residents. These are minor, minor improvements. And they are minor improvements that will make a big difference in the lives of families in that area. I encourage you to please move forward on improving this under, excuse me, underutilized neighborhood park and just improving, voting for the master plan overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Please, if you're comfortable doing it, introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Voss. I am a Tiburon resident and mother of two. I support the adoption and implementation of the Tiburon Parks and Master Plan tonight. What an exciting time. We're ready, we're ready for this. As we talked about, there are eighteen hundred and eleven acres of open space and only fifty six acres of parks, three percent. And that's the, that's what we're addressing today, not the eighteen hundred, the fifty six. As W R, as WRT points out, the demographic of Tiburon is changing. It's great to hear that the sewage treatment ponds are now available for active play. Let's make the best use of it. The best part of this, the best part about that is that this land is open to the Tiburon public. We have spent months and years to get to this point and look forward to utilizing this decision framework with community input. So and I'm also really happy to hear all the younger generations speaking up for themselves here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further public input?
Good evening. My name is Pam Snellgrowth, and I live also on Greenwood Beach Road. And I am also very grateful to all of you involved in this process and look forward to its passage, adoption. There are two brief points that I wanted to raise. The first has to do with transportation and traffic flow as it impacts all of the exciting ideas that we have here. Obviously, transportation and traffic flow is a significant issue as far as we residents on Greenwood Beach are concerned. But in this case, I think one thing I wanted to raise is the fact that we have ongoing now, in addition to the Parks and Open Space, we're also, the town is engaged in an extensive traffic study, as well as we have the Caltrans project coming up in the next two years. So my request here would be that absolutely, as much as possible, we integrate and look at the connections and the impacts as far as traffic flow goes between these three different plans. And as was talked about earlier, the Caltrans project is going to enter, if it, if the, if that goes ahead, the bike lanes will enter Black East pasture. And that we thoughtfully work together with Caltrans or whoever to make sure that they come in at a point that then supports the traffic flow we're talking about here. And then the other thing that I bring up is that certainly Greenwood Beach, because as as I'm aware, we flow directly into Black East pasture. There are two other neighborhoods I can think of along the Old Rail Trail that come right up to it. But I would ask very earnestly that we're sure that as these specific new uses are being considered, that the neighborhoods are contacted before, at the beginning of the process of consideration. And not wait until designs and money has been spent putting together plans, and then the neighbors end up in a position, which is not where we would like to be. So thank you again.
Any further public comment?
Good evening. Lovely to see all of you. By way of reminder, I'm Brittany Hannan. I am a homeowner on Corinthian Island, also Nicole's neighbor. Hello. I wanted to add to what was already said, which I already very much agree with. Just by saying, I guess, despite my wearing appearance for a Parks and Rec very fashionable sticker, I'm in fact not a parent. And I think that as we consider, do we build playgrounds? Are basically, what are we taking from that big priority list, which I took part in? I love the priority list. Maybe we don't put the focus on playgrounds, because there are those of us that are millennials that have fur babies, that don't have children that would potentially be using the playground. So things like a pool, for those of us that don't have, you know, thirty thousand dollars or several years that they want to spend waiting for a pool that you, you know, that essentially requires private access. What are those types of types of things that would benefit the balanced demographic that you were articulating earlier in the presentation? So those are my two cents. Again, fully agree with these girls over here. Thank you so much for your time, and can't wait to see what happens next.
You have a good neighbor.
Hi, thank you. I am Emily, Tiburon resident, parent of three, and mental health professional, working with teens in our local schools. Thank you for this plan. Thank you for the work. Let's move toward adoption. I'm here to say, I want to speak to the Bel Air Play Area as a resident of that area. A few days ago, it was posted to remove the suggested upgrades entirely. Now it seems to have been softened to engaging community input, which seems anodyne on the surface, but I fear in effect serves to shut down the eminently reasonable, limited, necessary, and widely agreed upon list already previously included in the plan. All the other areas you mentioned have direct to do's. For example, improve the entry to Belveron Park. And in the plan, as posted, there were direct suggestions for Bel Air, good ones, built out of a year and a half of community input. This is one of the few neighborhood parks in Tiburon. The town has already expressed support for optimizing these neighborhood parks. It has a huge need for basic maintenance and huge opportunity for being made a usable space for children's free play for minimal cost and effort. And not just children, I want to speak to the point here, for everyone. It's for walking, it's for dogs, it's for playing, it's for existing in the outdoor space that we have in Tiburon in abundance. So let's keep the Baylor specific to do's in. I do have a note here for council. Forty some Baylor neighborhoods, neighbors who signed on just in the past twenty four hours to support keeping this preliminary list in the plan. Again, the list that was initially included, improved site drainage, maintenance and trash removal, picnic table, native plants, signage, including clear rules and regulations for dogs. There was a lack of consensus around the gravel path, thinking that that would be perhaps noisy, but also recognizing there is a need for accessibility. So I'll give you this letter in just a moment. I'll give you this letter in just a moment. Um, but beyond an inclusive of Bel Air, Parents for Parks and Rec has put together a list where we would like to see the town focus immediately. Um, you've all seen that before. It's not necessarily germane to the plan specifically, but does reflect a lot of the to do's that you've shared with us. Um, I want to fundamentally say, we know this may not all be possible. We know there is not full consensus on every line item in the proposed plan or even in our groups lists. And yet, please do not let this keep you from acting. Make decisions with the decision making trust and power we voters have vested in you. Please don't spend more time on the margins, more time trying to find perfection. Do good now, before these kids and before all of us are too old to enjoy it. Mayor Frederick, you told me a few months ago that it was nice. We're advocating for parks that won't even benefit our kids, and I have to respectfully reject that construct. I think that we can get some easy wins done now. We're here continuing to advocate because we believe it's feasible and we believe it's reasonable. So please make the decisions to do it. So you've all been elected to represent all of Tiburon, two of you, again, quite recently. Please consider your election a mandate from your residents and please represent us. Adopt this plan, keep in the elements like Bel Air and work toward quickly implementing easy wins for all of us.
Further public comment?
Hi, thank you all for the work that you've done on all of this. Um, I'm Leslie Swillinger. Uh, I also live in Bel Air. Um, my property backs up onto what's now being called Bel Air Play Area. Um, whatever we call it, it's, it's a low use uh neighborhood park. And I would just like to support the ladies who want um very minor improvements to this area to make it more accessible, more usable um for everybody. I, you know, they're asking really for very little. They're asking for a picnic table. They're asking for um a drinking fountain that I think the school would like also. Um, you know, I, I haven't heard from, from my friends in the neighborhood and I've lived there for thirty eight years, so I, I know a lot of people. Um, any complaints about those requests? I mean, the last meeting was filled with people from Bel, Bel Air, talking about a proposal that wasn't even on the list. So, so I think you know, these are minor issues that, that really can be addressed by the town to make this a more usable area, a more people friendly area, more usable for kids. And I would like to say that people are very grateful for the trash cans that were put up and for the divots that were filled. So, you know, the these minor improvements really improve the use and access, uh, and I encourage you to do that. I, I just would also like to add a thanks to Jerry Reason and I, I, if I remember correctly, Jerry, you were instrumental in preserving Ring Mountain, the, the original level of Ring Mountain. And that was in the early seventies, so really a big, big hand of thanks to Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comments?
All right. Hello. Good evening. Um, I'm Kimla Dall. I'm a resident as well of Tiburon. I've lived here fourteen years. Um, one of my questions about the, just in the plan is, I think Post may have taken an action to say that there will be subcommittees formed to then further look at and have neighborhoods and, and get more input about the local parks like Belveron Mini Park. Is that, will that be captured in this plan as part of like the next steps or like what happens from here? Does that get formalized?
So Post has not made that suggestion to us. That'd be a question for staff. Are there further subcommittees? Because they already have.
Yeah, so once the plan is adopted, Post has created five subcommittees to look at furthering this plan once adopted by town council and they broke it up into different park areas, different areas of town to go out and, and help facilitate uh bringing this plan to life. So yes, uh, once the plan's adopted and, and the subcommittees are currently working as well right now on it, but um it'll keep moving forward. I would say stay tuned to, you know, more meetings for the next year.
And then.
Clear. It's not a part of the plan. It's part of Post's strategy for implementing.
Correct. Yeah, this is not part of the plan.
Post will make suggestions to the town council um and recommendations, and then we'll consider those. Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification. And then just a public comment I'm already sort of hearing. I feel like the sewage ponds, you know, becoming a recreational opportunity is just such an incredible um purchase by the town. So thank you and such a great opportunity. And um, I, you know, I asked my son, what would he want? He'd want a skate park. That's probably not going to happen. My husband voted for bocce courts and some picnic tables. Um, but I, I would say I've already heard that there's some community members who are already starting to um form a coalition against, you know, a lot happening there. It would be like just another passive space, which I enjoy these passive spaces, but I think that would be a lost opportunity here. And I think that comes maybe from views from the hillside and what they're going to look on. I just can't imagine that looking on something other than a sewage pond would be any worse. Um, and I just hope that, you know, we all can be very creative about landscaping opportunities, trees, landscaping, you know, wood features, things that can be built into that area so that it can be an actively used area and still maintain sort of that tranquil landscape and views that I know people on the hillsides think about. So that's just, just putting that out there. Thanks for all your work and I hope you all will adopt this plan.
Is there any further public input?
As I mentioned before, I'm a little slower than I usually am, so please excuse me for a bit. Um, my name is Bruce King and I live on Hacienda Drive. I fully support the upgrades to the parks. I would recommend commencing the work as soon as possible. And these improvement and upgrades should not be contingent on adoption of the master plan. It would be a big win-win for the residents, their children, and for the town council to get these improvements started. I feel it's too premature to adopt the plan at this time. First of all, it's incomplete. W R T just included a list of changes which should be incorporated into the plan for form and content for review. There is too much information. It's too complicated to try to review piecemeal in this meeting. I can talk about the trails and Peter just submitted his third, third version of proposed trailhead parking, which contains some material omission of facts. For your information, his first version indicated there was no parking at the trailheads. He contends that there is not sufficient parking at the trailheads, which is wrong. Even W R T's statement in their appendix zero three, page twenty three contradicts every misleading statement that Peter has made. Please queue up to ours fifty four minutes on the latest post meeting to get an understanding of my comments. But case in point, we'll talk about today. Did anyone pick up on the fact that the presentation that Peter showed regarding the post recommendations is inconsistent with what he wrote um in the comments that were published over the weekend? He left out an important word. Um, dedicated parking. The Post Commission said dedicated. Peter left dedicated out of his presentation today. Those are part of the misleading comments that concern me. The W R T appendix three says, while there is no formal car parking, typically there is adjacent parking on the street. In addition, everyone at the post meeting, including Peter, ultimately acknowledged that street parking is available. But Peter continues to discourage, instead of encourage, parking at the trailheads. I think this will be a big deterrent for the Martha property or anybody else who wants to use the trail. Over the past year, there are four other incorrect factual issues which he has ignored and failed to address, which I've included in my cover letter.
Can you wrap it up, please, Bruce?
Please take the time to review Pala Grinelli. In addition, the map and map lines along Hacienda on page one oh one are incorrect. And the future alter roadless trail connection, map line and description should be eliminated since the project has officially been halted and there is no longer an approved trails at this site at this time.
Thank you, Bruce.
Again, for these reasons, I urge you to withhold the adoption of the plan until a complete and corrected plan is resubmitted for review.
Thank you. Um, thi- this actually brings up a question I have uh for staff. Is it all right with council?
No, you can't ask.
Well, you can spank me later. Um. Um, what is designated parking? I mean, people can park on our public streets. Is that designated parking? I don't mean a list of designated parking. I mean, what does the term mean?
Designated parking in our, in, in terms of what we were uh discussing and, and studying is parking strictly reserved for the open space to park and enter the, the trailheads, trailheads. The street parking is open for everyone, but it's also residential parking, contractor parking, anybody can park on, on the street right of way.
And, and just, just remind me, give me an example of designated trailhead parking.
Uh, one that comes to mind is the one on Gil Martin. We have the Upper Fire Road and the Lower.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, folks. Uh, public comment is continuing. Is there any more public comment?
Hi, I, I'm Mike Shepard. I've lived here for about twenty eight years. Uh, I spend a lot of time in Southlinole Park and along the old rail trail. I think W R T has written a great report. It was the product of great vetting. Uh, but after all that vetting, there is a, or there are a few things that got added that I think need a little more vetting or should be taken out until, uh, two items. Number one, it's been asked about a little before. It's page ninety four. What I would call the Bike-A-Thon or the Bike-O-Bon, uh, the high speed uh bike expressway. Um, that hasn't been discussed. Um, there is a consensus that there's too much speed on the old rail trail, but not a consensus or vetting that having a Bike-O-Bon is the right solution to it.
That's going to stick.
It, um, this is supposed, we're supposed to be maintaining the peaceful and natural quality of Southlinole Park. This would take the best part of it, the nice little trail right along the water and pave paradise there and put in a high-speed bikeway. Um, we would, it seems to me, we want to discourage high-speed bikes as opposed to encourage them. The trail, the high-speed Bike-O-Bon can't go the whole way. There'll be a terrible merge. Um, when that was raised at the Post Commission, the people listened to that and the answer was, in this current version, there are speed bumps. But, you know, if you're out there, a lot of the people who are riding really fast are young people on these big, heavy bikes. Now, most of the young people are actually more law abiding than the old people.
Let's talk to the council right now.
But there are, there are young people who ride really fast. They're on these big, heavy bikes. They're just going to go right around these speed bumps and, you know, smile and, you know, go, life, life will go on. There'll be a terrible merge there. Um, and, and that's going to be really dangerous. There are other things we should try first before we build a Bike-O-Bon. You know, we should uh try curves. We could try speed bumps. We could try a little trail for toddlers alongside the, the current trail. Um, I, I, I just think that's an idea. It needs more vetting. It isn't, it isn't ready yet and shouldn't be part of the plan. Um, the other quick one, um, there's a little inconsistency now about Southlinole Park as to whether it's going to remain tranquil. If you look at page sixty six, page one hundred and thirty one, there's some inconsistency about it. I think South of Noel Park should be a nice peaceful place for the Egrets and the Herons and the people who want to enjoy the tranquility. So great report, just a couple of things that popped up at the end that I think need more vetting.
Um, can you just say what those inconsistencies are between page sixty six and page one thirty one?
So page sixty six has two paragraphs, two bullet point paragraphs right next to each other. One says, some people think there ought to be a little more in Southlinole Park, but the majority of people think no. And I think the second bullet point is correct, there, but there's no other place in the report where there's this sort of back and forth. Some this, some that, you know, let's make a decision. That's the point of this is to set up some criteria for future use. Um, I think that back and forth got added and it should come back out.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there any further public comment?
Hello. My name is Mindy Henter. I've been a resident um of Bel Air for over thirty five years. I've also served as chair and commissioner on the Parks and Open Space Commission for fifteen years. Uh, that's what it was called then, and also president of the Bel Air Homeowners Association. I'm here to talk about Bel Air Park. Um, Bel Air was developed by William Blackfield. Uh, it was finished in nineteen fifty three. And hence Blackfield Drive. The Bel Air Open Field was deeded to Bel Air, to the Bel Air neighborhood in perpetuity by William Blackfield to remain as an undeveloped space to be enjoyed in multiple passive ways. I've met with the Blackfield family over the years and we've always talked about what a treasure this open field is. And Bel Air residents agree. I gotta say, the consultant got it wrong by labeling this area as a mini park without doing due diligence and research. And by labeling it as mini park and asking for suggestions for improvements, he opened up a can of worms uh by asking for improvement in an area that is a dedicated, undeveloped, natural, multi-use area. In fact, the plot map says that it is a play area. The consultant asked for suggestions and I asked him initially how many people he talked to and he said seventeen. And I asked him how many of those were from the neighborhood, uh, who, how many were not from the neighborhood and he said six. The suggestions at that time, at the beginning of this whole process, now I am stunned and shocked to see that they appear on the final master plan as recommendations. So eleven people from the neighborhood that made these suggestions clearly is not a consensus since there are a hundred eighty three homes in Bel Air. Um, at the last post meeting, there were over forty five Bel Air residents voicing their opposition to this new mini park designation and the added character and urbanized suggestions for the area. I don't think the final master plan is the place for suggestions because it looks like it is being given final approval. And it's being touted as recommendations when really those are suggestions by a very small few bunch of people. Um, the area is accessible. Um, I don't agree with any of the bullet points under Bel Air Park. And I would like to see the master plan be corrected and edited before final approval. Um, the corrections I would like to see is to rename it to Bel Air Play Area Field. So it can't be. So it can't be construed as a playground. I'd, I'd like to s- uh, I think it needs to remove all the suggestions on the master plan on page thirty. Especially no gravel path or walkway as it would ruin the whole purpose and use of the field. This field's been used for, oh, ad hocs, soccer, softball, um, all kinds of things, um, over the years.
Please, Mindy.
Yes, yes. The other thing I would like to see is change the zoning to R five. Uh, I've been bitten by dogs from, with owners from out of the area there and I would not like to see a dog park there. Uh, I love dogs, but as a formal dog park, I think no. So I would like to see the council make a motion tonight to correct and edit the master plan with these changes before it's finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there further public comment?
I'm asking for here in the room, yes? I'm, I'm sorry, I can't. If you want to speak, come up to the mic.
She's already spoken.
Oh, you've already spoken. Thank you. This is not the time, uh, to do that. Is there any public comment online?
We do have speakers online.
Thank you very much. Uh, we bring this back to council now.
Oh, sorry, Mayor.
We do have speakers online, Madam Mayor.
I thought you said there were none.
We do have.
We do.
We do. I'm so sorry. I misunderstood you.
Okay, we'll start with Bob.
Uh, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, my name is Robert Paul and I'm a Tiburon resident. I've spoken to town council in August and September. About the growing interest in beach volleyball here in Tiburon. I realize this is not the meeting to finalize amenities, but I believe both WRT and the post commission. Are not accurately reflecting the level of community interest in beach volleyball here in town. I would kindly ask the Tiburon Town Council to realize that the WRT mailed survey that they spoke about tonight. Sounds like it was a snapshot in time in two thousand and three. And you've seen in the email submissions that I put, uh, in this week's, uh, agenda, uh, the late mail number thirty four. And some of the, the signatures that we submitted. That there's a significant amount of growing interest here in Tiburon for beach volleyball courts. Uh, we submitted over, uh, one hundred Tiburon signatures, eighteen Belvedere residents, many other people in Marin County. And on top of that, a brave and eloquent young man tonight has done his own petition for a basketball court in the Linear Park. The, both of these petitions represent more up to date opinions from Tiburon residents. And I kindly ask town council to consider these as they think about some of the high priority and quick win amenities. Uh, as they make the final decisions here. Thank you.
Is there further public comment?
Next is Linda.
Hi, um, my name is Linda Sapolsky and, um, thank you guys all so much for everything and for listening to two of my four charming kids tonight. Um, I'm in favor of passing the master plan or whatever is going to get these amenities for our teens and tweens. Who are often stuck hanging out at CVS, um, when their time could be better spent, you know. Um, playing beach volleyball or basketball, um, in that little area. It used to be a sewage, like waste sanitation area. And so I do think that, you know, anything there would be an improvement. Um, Tiburon deserves to have outstanding amenities for all of its kids. Um, and thank you so much to the Parks and Rec people who have been working so hard to get these changes. Um, and I, I also share the sentiment that like the quick wins that can happen and help our children. You know, we don't wanna, we want this for future generations of kids, but it shouldn't be taking so long. Um, I was shocked when I went around and with my children collecting signatures, they got, uh, three hundred seventeen signatures in about a week. And, um, just the outpouring of excitement from people in this town who want spaces for tweens and teens. And, um, just again, the opportunity that that old sewage area presents. Um, for both beach volleyball and basketball and, um, any other thing would be really, really great. Thank you.
Next is Lena.
Hi, I'm Lena Godfrey, mom of four kids under seven here in Tiburon. Here as usual to harp on the fact that while we get all bogged down in the intricacies of exact verbiage. Please make whatever you approve and whatever you do inherently and implicitly inclusive and accessible to individuals with disabilities. From early planning onward, not as an afterthought. That's pretty much the TLDR of what I have to say, but since I'm here, I'll elaborate a little bit. Um, I commend the effort that has gone into this long debated plan. I do have to say, I question the lack of actionable commitments to accessibility and, accessibility and inclusion in it. Yeah, the word accessibility or universal design appears once or twice throughout this presentation, but it's not enough to drop the term without detailing tangible strategies or outcomes. They're not just buzzwords to check, check off a list. They're actually just rights essential to creating a community where every resident can fully participate. For example, the to-do lists or early action items have no mention of inclusivity, universal design or accessibility. My concern is this plan offers no concrete design elements or plans to ensure that parks, trails, playgrounds and community spaces. That we are all dreaming of and want to come as soon as possible are universally accessible. Where are the explicit priorities for inclusive playgrounds, adaptive rec programs at the ranch or mobility device friendly trails or pathways? Where are the designs that account for sensory needs or mobility devices and inclusive gathering sta- spaces? It's also a bit troubling to me that there was a failure to engage with stakeholders who could improve this situation, an obvious best practice approach. Despite being a town that hires consultants, consultants for nearly everything, Tiburon hasn't sought expert advice on accessibility or universal design in this park's plan. Nor has it convened community roundtables specifically meant to hear from disabled community members. Or disability adjacent people in order to get proper feedback. When I've raised these concerns, they've seemed like they're a bit dismissed or the response is a bit surface level. As I've said before, there isn't a playground in Tiburon where I can bring all four of my children to play together. My four-year-old wanted to come to the meeting tonight to ask for a playground where she can play with her big sister, who's a wheelchair user, who can't access our play structures in our town. Some of the pathways and other amenities. Between accessibility issues and safety issues at our current playgrounds, these are not minor oversights. They're barriers that exclude families like mine and show that Tiburon is still not an inclusive community. An inclusive Tiburon isn't just morally right. It's a legacy that ensures every resident feels welcome and valued in our shared spaces. I imagine a few access or injury lawsuits would drain funds that could otherwise be used to enhance accessibility in the first place. So let's instead create spaces that go the extra mile to welcome everybody. How about it? Let's design and invest in inclusive playgrounds where people of all abilities can play together. Let's make sure our recreational amenities take into account safe access for all residents. Let's lay the foundation for and facilitate multi-generational enjoyment of our beautiful town and its built environment. Thank you.
Next is Angela.
Hi there. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'm not usually on this side of the, uh, side of these things. Um, and so, uh, I'd just like everyone to please take a moment. And let's reflect on why we're actually here and why are we working on this park's master plan? And what is the town council voting on tonight? What are you voting on? So the town council is not voting on any specific new amenity tonight. As a post commissioner, I absolutely love all of the public input and enthusiastic. Uh, amenity endorsements, whether it's from swimming pools to basketball courts to pickleball to volleyball to whatever it is. I think it's fantastic and we can't wait to hear more about it. But let me be clear, no specific amenities are going to be approved tonight. New amenities and new additions will flow through the whole pipeline. They're gonna go through a public approval process. They're gonna go through the post commission. They're gonna go back to town council. At a future date. Nothing is happening tonight. So what is the town council voting on? The town council is voting on a decision-making framework. Similar to planning how you build a house, the land, the structures and amenities need to be well thought out. When you plan ahead, you end up with, when you do not plan ahead. You end up with a hodgepodge of ideas implemented in an ineffective and potentially costly way. It's everyone, it's a waste of everyone's time, resources, effort and expense to make short sighted decisions. The post commission, I am a commissioner on, asked the town council to create a park's master plan. So that in the future, the post commission would have well researched. And thought out, community driven plan to implement new amenities that the town would like to have. The park's master plan is a roadmap. It is a plan. It is a decision-making tool for what, why, where and how. New amenities are going to be incorporated, built and maintained so that our entire parks, open spaces and trails. Can work cohesively together to provide optimal user experience for all residents of the Tiburon Peninsula. I encourage the town council to adopt this plan tonight. It is a well thought out. It is a community driven plan and it is supported by a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments?
Name Frederick. Um, I just want to say one quick thing. I just want to acknowledge, uh, Commissioner Angela McInerney's work. Um, she is the first person that suggested that we do a park's master plan. So I want to thank you for your comments, but I also want to acknowledge. Um, that what we're doing tonight is, uh, really because of you. So thank you, Angela.
Is there further public comment?
Next speaker is Matan.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, good evening. My name is Matan Shaham. I'm a resident of Bel Air. Uh, and I'm calling in to support the, uh, proposed improvements for the Bel Air field. That until very recently were in the plan. Uh, specifically, those are improved drainage, improved maintenance, picnic table, native plants and signage. Uh, I, I know the gravel path is out and, and that's fine. Uh, these are basic, modest, common sense improvements. They won't change the nature of the field or the neighborhood. Make the field safer and better for all of us and especially for those of us, uh, with young children in the neighborhood. There's broad consensus for this in the neighborhood after lots of discussion. I understand that it was taken out recently because of a few loud voices. But as far as I can tell, the objections that have been raised historically to these small improvements are based. Uh, there, there are objections to things that are no longer on the table. Uh, no one is talking about a playground that hasn't been on the table for a long time. No one is talking about development. No one is talking about urbanization. The, the field will stay open. It will stay undeveloped. It will stay a field. It will just be better and safer. Put another way, I love the field and so do most residents of the neighborhood, but that doesn't mean that it needs to be a ditch. It's a place where people play impromptu soccer games. That's true. Let's not have it be a place where kids playing those soccer games fall over the holes that are, are littering that field and break their legs. This is, there, there are complicated things that, that, um, you all are, are trying to decide and I, I praise you for the effort. And all the thought that's gone into it, but respectfully, this is not a difficult issue. This is really simple, common sense, easy improvements. And so I, I urge the council to, to put those back in. It's a win-win. It's easy. Let's, uh, get that done and, and let's get it done quickly so that my kids at least can enjoy it before they've gone to college. Thank you all.
Is there any further public comment?
Seeing no additional comments.
Uh, so we now bring it back, uh, to council.
Think that the master plan needs some correction.
I, I'm sorry, but, um, yes, you got it. Uh, we're bringing it back to council. Again, um, most of the comments we have gotten are on specific projects. And what we will be looking at tonight is approval of a framework for the decision makers. It's a description of the process. It's not implying approval of any specific project. Just a list of projects based on community input to be considered in the guiding principles under which to make those decisions. And having framed it that way, although I have a couple of comments on the plan itself, I think I will let my colleagues take over. John.
Thank you. Um. So I actually have boiled my comments down to about. Four items. Um. I guess I want to start off by saying. Um. Thanks to the community and thanks to our staff and thanks to the consultant for this report. Um. I feel great about it. I like the master plan. Um, I think the turning point for me was at that initial meeting that we had with you. Uh, and I think it was council member Ryan who kind of first raised this sort of question about zoning. Using a zoning kind of framework, an area framework, which really clicked for me and I thought, look. In order to be a useful, as was discussed, uh, just now, in order to be a useful roadmap for us. To make rational decisions going forward and, um. The best way to do it, uh, is to identify what kinds of things we need in different parts of the, of our parks and open space. Uh, so that we can then. Get past all that confusion and focus on specific actions that we want to take. What I will say is, I actually think that as monumental as I think the master plan is in terms of its importance for our town. The real work is going to be next year. Um, and it's going to be important, I said before that I thought that some of this stuff. Is just incredibly low hanging fruit. It should just be done really fast. Um, particularly with regard to the neighborhood parks. And, um, I, I, I hope, um, that that's how it goes. Uh, I'm delighted that Post is working on it. Um, I don't want to wait too long. Uh, so, uh, I think what I would say is, um. I expect Post to move quickly. If they don't, I think the council's gonna pass them up. On some of these things, but I loved the early action items, uh, and I, I really support. Their, the inclusion of that kind of list, uh, in this report. I'm gonna vote to approve it. I don't think it's perfect. Uh, but I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good here. And this is not a. Uh, like I said, this is not, every detail in this report doesn't have to be. Precise. Every word doesn't have to be perfectly wordsmith in order for it to be. Ninety plus percent correct and a, and a good tool for us, uh, to move forward with. Um, I think it's, I think it's actually a pretty inspirational plan and very helpful. Um, I do have, uh, like I said, uh, four specific. Items I, I want to quickly address. Um, it took me a while to figure this out, but I think one of the issues that I have is with the classification of R one. Cause R one category, as far as I can tell, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it basically includes two areas. Includes the kind of the McKegney Green sanitation area. Um, uh, in, in, uh, Richardson Bay Linear Park. Plus Tether Park. Those are kind of the two spots. And I think they're very different spots. Uh, and so I think, I kind of. I don't want to change the whole plan. I don't want to change R one, but I kind of think that there's. Uh, R one sub A and R one sub B, uh, in my mind. And my view is that the McKegney Green sanitation. Um, uh, district area. Absolutely, trying to see, I, I haven't, I had in front of me the description of R one, but I, you know, it's absolutely correct that it's for. Active use and all that, but the difference between the two is, um. The part that is at Richardson Bay Linear Park has all of the, you know, it has access and, um. Usefulness as being full of amenities, but it also has this incredible, um, visual component. um, visual component to it. Uh, and it's part of, I, I've used this term before, but it's really the gem of Tiburon. It's just beautiful there. And we want to make sure that we don't overdevelop it. Uh, and so my view is that you know, I, I'm looking particularly at page, it's labeled one twenty seven. It's really one twenty six, whatever. Um, uh, of the, of the report where it talks about specific high priority amenities and then appropriate park areas for them. And I think um, I think there are some things that might be appropriate for Tether Park that are just not appropriate for Richardson Bay. And so for my, my number one example of this and I'm I, I, I'm sure, uh, I, I know of a specific council member that's going to disagree with me, but I, I think that the idea of a, of a pool at Richardson Bay is completely incompatible and wrong. Um, I think it could go into the park. Um, but the, the, the idea of such a in intense use and, you know, uh, concrete and uh, visual impact and all of those things do- doesn't belong at the gateway to our beautiful Richardson Bay. So I guess I think what I would say is that I think that R1 in Richardson Bay has an important uh, visual aspect to it that Tether Park may have less of. So a- and also, you know, maybe noise and other things. So for example, the idea of building, you know, at one point we talked about building indoor pickleball courts so that it would control noise. I could see that at a place like Tether Park. I can't see that Richardson Bay. So I think while it's lumped together as R1 because they're both active, I think there should be at least a footnote or some kind of acknowledgement that those R1s are not the same and that there needs to be extra emphasis on compatibility with the park. Um, and the, and the view and the park-like atmosphere uh, in Richardson Bay. Um, my second comment has to do with the biking trail realignment. Um, I do think it's kind of uh, a- and maybe this is my fault. I, I do think that it's kind of a feels like more of a last minute change or a new thing that's happened at the end. Maybe it's not. Um, I guess I think uh, it would be useful and it, it probably is phrased to some degree as kind of a suggestion or tentative idea as opposed to a strong recommendation, but I think more brainstorming is probably called for. Uh, one suggestion that was made by, kind of half made by a couple of speakers uh, is are we sure that we want the bike a bond or whatever to be, to be the part of the trail that's closest to the water? Maybe if we were going to separate them out, the bike part should be closer to uh, Tiburon Boulevard, the kind of high area over the sanitation ponds and it would probably connect better to ultimately bike trails on Tiburon Boulevard that are contemplated. I, I guess what I would say about that is I would describe the biking trail, I, I would just make sure that it's described as concepts and that there are other configurations that might make sense. Um, uh, and, and I particularly think that the most beautiful part of the trail, which is right on the water, it might be good for strolling uh, as opposed to racing. And so I, I don't know. I, to me, um, I think, I think the it, it might make sense to realign them or add trails, but I don't know that the current configuration that's proposed ultimately is the right one. Um, the third point I would make is I loved, uh, this ties to what I said earlier. I love the early action. Um, proposal, not, I mean, I, I, I like them individually, but I like the idea of including this early action list because I think it will encourage implementation quickly of some things that people are waiting for. Um, so I, I think that was a great improvement. Uh, and then the last comment I have, uh, I was, I was sympathetic to what I heard um, from folks about uh, the survey maybe being a snapshot in time and there being new ideas about what to do with um, with amenities. Um, I know that, you know, the, the beach volleyball made a big resurgence. Now basketball is kind of on the rise. You know, there are these different ideas that come up and the petitions are not small. I mean, y- you were saying that the statistically significant number for the study that was done was two hundred and fifty. I, I, I'm sure we haven't really examined it, but to the extent that we have hundreds of signatories behind other ideas, that's coming pretty close to the, or exceeding the number of people who responded to the survey. So I guess what, that what that leads me to believe is that in the area where we say typical uses include, I think we should include some mechanism for um, new initiatives by the community that kind of convey you know, different ideas than were originally surveyed. Um, or, or, you know, pickleball has grown dramatically, you know, even, even in the last year, but it keeps growing. Um, so I, I think something that suggests that the amenities listed, i- it's great that we have this picture of the high priority amenities and I don't think we can do everything, but some acknowledgement that it's dynamic, uh, I think would be helpful. Um, like I said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this plan whether or not any changes are made because I think we're ready to have adopted it and move into the implementation phase of some of these things. Um, but I would like to see those changes made.
Thank you. Yes. Did you want to make comments?
I did, but Siri just started talking.
Siri did?
Yeah, Siri, Siri's talking on my computer. Okay. So um, I have a lot to say and I might have to come back to some comments later, but I want to start off with the very positive part, which is uh, look at where we are today and look at what we get to do. I mean, the idea that we get to look at our parks and that we have consultants and we have staff and we have engaged residents that are here, sometimes disagreeing, but they're engaged. And we all get to sit up here and look at a plan that will change the future of Tiburon's parks or not. And I just think that this is an amazing process and we need to acknowledge the moment we're in and be really happy that we get to do this work because this is the fun work that we get to do. Um, and really anything is possible uh, in our future here in Tiburon with respect to our parks, with respect to uh, what we can provide for our residents. And I think this is just a fantastic, exciting opportunity. And today it's true, we are approving the framework of how we make the decisions of what goes where and when and which project we choose, but just to have all these ideas and possibilities is really, really exciting um, to me. Um, so I have a lot of comments. Um, I will pick up on the last comment that uh, John made about page ninety-four. Um, and page ninety-four, uh, for those of you who don't have it in front of you is the slide that has the um, uh, changes to the bike path. I would actually like to see that slide um, deleted. Um, I, I believe that we are not yet at a place where we can do this. I think also, you know, a lot of people, I'm a regular user of the park. A lot of people like to walk on the water. Um, and then some people need to go on the pavement. I know that, you know, when my back's out, I gotta go up on the asphalt. And then when I'm okay, I can go down by the water. So I think you're going to see people changing where they use, use it and how they use it. I also think with um, the class four bike lanes and with other improvements to Tiburon Boulevard, this is something that will really need to be rethought and thought about at a different time. So I would like to actually um, delete um, page ninety-four, slide ninety-five. Um, and then I want to go to um, the appendices. Um, page ninety uh, of the appendices. Um, and talking about a small storage, talking about storage in the park. Um, it was very clearly decided that there was not going to be storage buildings in the park or storage facilities. So page ninety of the appendix, page ninety-three, um, ninety-six, ninety-seven. And um, throughout that whole section, there is talk about providing a storage building or um, uh, storage uh, containers and, you know, it's very clear that anything that Publix Works is storing is supposed to be at the Public Works courtyard and not in our park. So I would like those things taken out. I don't uh, believe anyone, um, yeah, I would like those taken out so as not to confuse the public. I think it starts on page ninety actually and goes through page ninety-seven. Um, and then I do have some very um, minor uh, like typographical things that I will provide. I'm not going to read them tonight. Um, but there are a few things that were pretty minor uh, typographical things. Um, and then I think on page eighty-nine uh, of the actual plan, there was previous direction uh, from the town council um, that um, that Richardson Bay sanitation district where the ponds were, was not a good site for outdoor pickleball. And I saw that pickleball was still in there. Um, on page eighty-nine of the plan. So I think that's something, um,
Which page? Eighty-nine?
It's, yeah, it's page eighty-nine or ninety. It's ninety of your pages, but eighty-nine if you go to the first, second, third, fourth lineup. It still has pickleball courts um, near a- as a suggested use for the sanitation pond site. And I thought we took that out. I would say we should probably take that out.
I agree with that, although I don't, I don't like to see that. I mean, we'd be looking at different pages.
Um, if you're in the actual plan, not the presentation,
Yep.
Um, under park character areas and improvement recommendations, page eighty-nine, page ninety of your slide viewer, you'll see there's the figure eighteen underneath figure eighteen. Um, if you go up, um, it, it still has pickleball in there.
Oh, and the paragraph uses here?
Yes, yes, it has the, yes. Um,
Well, it is, okay.
Documentation. Okay. Some of these have been answered already.
It's, that, that just meshes with what I was talking about in terms of what kind of development belongs there as opposed to Tether Park.
Well, it's, yeah, I just want pickleball courts out because we said it should be out. Then going to page one thirty-one. Um, Shoreline Park. Um, where on Shoreline Park were you intending to put a playground or restrooms?
I thought that was eliminated.
I thought it was eliminated as well, but I just wanted to check.
So
It was one of the recommendations
To eliminate.
That they covered today in the presentation to eliminate, to remove that.
I thought the, the restrooms were eliminated, but the structural
No.
Thing wasn't. Is that what, is that correct?
No, are both the structures and the restrooms were a recommendation, uh, and a motion from both.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, great. So that's eliminated. That will be taken out of the plan the next version. Okay. And then um,
Could I just follow that really briefly?
Sure.
So the post commission did make those recommendations and, but I think it would be important to hear from council which of those recommendations you all endorse because we haven't made any changes to the plan so far, um, since we presented it to Post.
So Weiwei, can I ask a question? I did see a communication that I thought the version that we were being presented as opposed to the original version that we saw in the presentation uh, would not include those restrooms and the play structures or whatever on Shoreline Park. What, who sent that and what was the meaning of it?
That was a post commission motion to remove those from the plan.
So that was suggested post commission. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't want to interrupt, but I just, this does bring up the question of how council directs staff today. You know, there are a number of recommendations to change the plan as it's currently drafted. And you know, there's basically two lists. One was developed by Post at their last meeting and the other were additional recommendations that WRT developed subsequent to the Post meeting. So short of voting on every single one, uh, we're open to suggestion how the council indicates their consensus on individual recommended changes.
And there's also a third, which is the individual things people
Absolutely. That's exactly right.
Okay. Um, so then, it's okay. No worries. So then going to page uh, one thirty-one. Um, where did those recommendations come from? Um, specifying that additional high use rec facilities would, would need the uh, parking and vehicular access? I was just curious where those came from. I believe it's around page one thirty-one. I might.
Think you're gonna have to zero in more.
Yes, so there was a recommendation that any high use rec facilities would need to have vehicular access and parking. I was just curious where the recommendation came from for that.
That was a recommendation.
To provide them. It was to consider that.
I, let me ask my question.
I think that was one of our recommended changes, that it was something that I recall either council or post commission, and I'm sorry, I don't remember now which body gave this guidance, but wanted clarity around the access considerations for high use facilities. And I think it didn't, it hasn't yet landed in the plan clearly, and I thought that was a cleanup ac- action.
Okay. I mean, I, I actually think that ev- everything, we would be looking at all of, all vehicular access and parking for almost anything we're considering. So I don't think it's necessarily high use. So I guess I would put that in as you know, consider, that would be one of the considerations the council would make when looking at, at anything would be, you know, look at the parking and the vehicular access. Uh, because, you know, it, there might be a very small park where something would make sense or would not make sense based on that. Um, then um, there were um, recommendations. Um, okay. Um, also I am, I am very concerned about the issues of accessibility. Um, I do think that we need to add um, something, some kind of a section or um, delineate how we're going to make uh, different items accessible. Um, you know, I know, um, I, I'm really excited about the idea of a accessible playground at Zelinski Park. Um, I also think uh, that site, I know we're not talking about site specific things, but just in general throughout the plan, you know, I'd like to see a couple paragraphs about accessibility and how that would look and, you know, Tiburon's commitment to uh, making uh, you know, play structures and facilities that everyone can enjoy. And specifically making them accessible. Uh, I'll have more I'll have more comments, but I just want to start with those. And I just, again, want to acknowledge our staff, David and WRT. You, you guys are saints and all subcontractors and all of our public, because this truly is a great process and I'm very excited. I'll be supporting the plan with the changes and I'm very excited about it. So thank you.
Is it appropriate for me to respond to the accessibility question? I want to
Yes, please.
Just provide some clarification. We have, the plan has a set of guiding principles, and I showed that on the screen briefly. Each of those guiding principles then is followed by a number of more detailed elements. And so one of the guiding principles was access and safety. And the first one of the more detailed thing, points about what that means is to embed accessibility and inclusivity in all improvements and changes. When adding or upgrading play structures, use universal design. So there's clear guidance in the plan to incorporate accessibility into all improvements. I think that there's an opportunity to make that clearer and to read, to read more strongly in the plan and the in the executive summary. So I might recommend elevating that, that, that message.
Yeah, thank you. That's what I was trying to get at. And thank you for including that, that part. Yeah, thank you.
Is there reason you don't? Okay.
Yeah, thanks. So thanks, as my, to echo my colleagues, thank you to WRT and to staff and to the public. I really appreciate this. I think this is super exciting. And I also support moving forward with the plan. And I think it it'll get tricky as to how we do it, because I think there's a bunch of, as you identified, Greg, there's three different layers of potential edits. But I will say first off, I support all of the post-recommendations that were included in Exhibit Three. Talk about them again, but you know, I'm glad we removed the restroom from Shoreline. I like adding the dog park notice. I like the new lettering schema of NST. And I think those are, all of those are improvements that will be constructive. I have I'm less uni- universal on my excitement about the subsequent ads in Exhibit Four. So those were the, those were the WRT recommended cleanups. And I would just say like Items One, I thought was fine. One through three, I thought were fine. And four, I didn't necessarily agree with the revised narratives or the four-point-three. I didn't, I don't know if we need to amend all those. But I love the early action. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. This is just stuff like take out things like the Bel Air Mini Park or Bel Air Play Area. Like, I, I, I'm fine leaving things that we contemplate in there as long as we say that they're just potential areas to contemplate. I don't like, this is what was proposed. I think that word proposed is kind of loaded and it certainly circles back to the, to the bike reconfigurations that my colleagues and Mr. Shepherd have pointed out. It's I, I don't like that word proposed. So there are, even though I agree with Vice Mayor Thier in terms of taking out Slide Ninety-four and Slide Ninety-three and Ninety-two, I think there's, or one of those two, there's a proposed realignment that we might want to say contemplated instead of proposed. I'm getting into the weeds here. With respect to Councilmember Wellners, I'll run delineation. I like it. I hadn't thought about it. I would be fine not doing it, but I'm, if you can think of a way to do it quickly and easily and we can still approve, I like it. And then, and I like the typical uses include thing. Because that was actually something that you showed in one of your very early slides tonight, Peter, in terms of this is what council wants us to make sure that this, this is, this works for things that come up in the future that weren't already identified. I actually would disagree with Vice Mayor Thier with respect to getting rid of the storage and the pickleball. Again, it's just sort of like, I like having things in there more in terms of showing that we're thinking about everything and situations change. You never know. I don't know why, like, we would leave some stuff in there, but take those out. It just seems like it's all part of the same philosophy of just leaving a bunch of things in there. And those in particular. I don't think pickleball would be appropriate at the ponds, but in the future, I don't know.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe they invent a new pickleball that's, that's quiet and makes no noise. So I, I don't know why we would take it out. Anyway, so, anyway, so those are sort of my broad potential edits and my a few of the specific, and then the specific ones that I remember. But otherwise, I'm looking forward to approving this, so.
Yeah, and I want to respond to one thing because the the pickleball and the storage building is very different. So for two years, every single commission and this town council voted against putting a storage building in Blackheath pasture. So that does need to come out. The community did not propose this and it should not be in this appendices because that it is not a good, we were not putting buildings in our park and the park is not a place for storage. It is a place for kids to play, for people to recreate, and it is absolutely inconsistent with the park's master plan to keep that in there. So I am going to ask for that to be removed and I'm going to make that part of the motion when I make it.
If you're the one who makes the motion.
All right, so.
I'll amend your motion, John.
So let's start with what's on the table now. You know, the fact of the matter is that there was a process that focused on the public works need because of the deficiencies in the public works site to have some storage for some of the big equipment that they now have to bring across the boulevard very slowly down into the areas in, in order to do the required maintenance. And the community did reject it. But I think it should remain in this plan. There are things in this plan that have been rejected before and with changed circumstances, it warrants looking at it. So for example, the whole issue of water access had been exist exhaustively studied in twenty thirteen. It's time to look at it again. If we where were you guys when I was raising teenagers, for goodness sakes? Anyway, as we add or change the amenities in the area, the needs will change and the need for that kind of storage may increase, it may decrease, but I think this is not a decision-making process now. It is a framework for the decision-makers. And so leaving something in, even if it were to be rejected, really is, is the better avenue to go. One of the things that has not been discussed that I would like the council to consider is adding open spaces to the title of this recreation plan. I know that the only thing that touches the, the open space in terms of a decision to be made is various signage and, and trailhead and parking suggestions that will be considered, but open space is acknowledged in the very first paragraph of the executive summary. The plan itself references parks, open space, recreation. And the policy history of this town is that open space is the recreational amenity and the educational amenity that defines us. I think leaving it out, especially because there are plans being discussed that are, are not public now because they're nascent means that this will be a discussion about what is available for recreation in the future. And I think it just needs to be in the title. And it is, it is recognized. The other thing that I would like to really support is, is that Post prepare this list of early action projects. You know, they should be things that are relatively easily to be implemented and things where the costs can be considered in the budget next fiscal year or even in an amended budget this year if it's not too expensive. So we really get rolling from the get-go. I think Post needs to send that list to us, or if council prefers, we can ask staff to look at this decision-making plan and bring it directly to us. It's up to you. Other than that, I am very comfortable adopting the suggestions of my colleagues. I did have one comment, and this is the micromanaging of editing that I really hate, and I'm about to do it, but I blame my colleagues. There is a sentence there that, that people love to live near parks. That really is not the history of this community. What they like is peace, quiet, open space, visual amenities. And I think that does not reflect what the priorities are in terms of where people want to live. And we do have parks. Sometimes they are noisy, but most of the time they're well-used. I just don't see any use stating that people love them. They don't dislike living near them, but they are, as noted in, in the site information, a consideration of a noise generator. And I think that is all I have to say, except that I really have some trepidation about not seeing what this document looks like in the end. And I wonder if there's a way to just see the document with all the proposed changes that the council has made and has approved of that Post has made and bringing it back at least on the consent calendar. So the public and all of us have time to read it without reopening all the issues. And that is for my colleagues to decide.
And it feels like a second reading like we do with, with ordinances.
Yeah, I was gonna, when I made the motion, I was gonna make the motion, then it come back to us and we see it after. Because otherwise, we won't, we won't be able to see all the changes. Some of the changes are not, not yet developed.
I'd find that while we're on that subject, did anyone, did Mr. Pringle's comments, I don't see him anymore, but his comments about adding more sort of navigation and page numbers resonate with anyone? Because I I, I would encourage WRT to make it more navigable with that sort of page-number-y stuff, but if that doesn't work for you guys.
So that's making the page numbers actually match the place of a particular page?
Well, that, that certainly would help me out.
I also have some comments I'd love to share.
Yeah, let's remember, Councilmember Nick Farr is online, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're so quiet, Councilmember. Please.
Well, I wanted to hear what everyone had to say first. So I'd like to thank the town staff and WRT for this work. I'd also like to thank the Post Commission for all of their work in, in looking into, you know, the, the Parks Master Plan and, and also even looking ahead a little bit in terms of, of projects. Thank you to everyone who's braved the storms to be there in person and for all of your thoughtful public comment. Thank you for all of the letters and the emails. I, I know myself and many of the town council members read all of them. They mean a lot to, to me in terms of, of how I hope to represent the residents of Tiburon. And I think I'd like to, to make a couple of, of, of comments. I think it's, it's incredibly important that the Bel Air Mini Park feedback is included. It's important that any projects for Bel Air or any neighborhood parks have neighborhood consensus. As a former resident of Bel Air, living on Leland for four years, that park was in desperate need of attention when I lived there. And when we moved there in twenty twelve, and it is, it is not improved significantly at all from that time. Belveron Park is also badly in need of help and should also have neighborhood consensus on that. I think, you know, Belveron Park also potentially, you know, in our initial investigations when I was a Post Commissioner, has some portions of that park that have been repurposed as private property. So I think that's sort of the risk, I think, as a town, when we let parks go and we don't improve them or maintain them, that in some cases they can be repurposed as someone's backyard, which is unfortunate. And so I think, I think those are two things I wanted to mention. I think it's also important to echo. I think what Councilmember Thier and Councilmember Ryan, I think, both mentioned that, and I think this aligns also with Councilmember Wellner's comments that, you know, sheds that take up space in Tiburon's crown jewel are, are something that we've voted down in the past and I don't think are an appropriate use of space in that area where it, it's so so small in terms of, of the overall parks and, and open space that we have, that little bit at McKegney and with the new ponds that we purchased. I think putting a shed up there is just a terrible waste of, of that crown jewel to, to use Councilmember Wellner's words. And especially if they could contain chemicals or other things like that near children. I, I think that's, that's also a risk for the town. I think ADA and accessible elements need to be a little more prominently displayed in the, in the final version. I think that they are called out and accessible elements to playgrounds as well as ADA access. I've, I've been on the record around comments with the Caltrans repaving that needs to have that asphalt ramp improved. It's in a side, but it does connect Avenida to the old rail trail, so I thought it was worth mentioning here. I think what I also hope is that everyone who's here and anyone that, that, that reads this master plan, Parks Master Plan realizes that overwhelmingly Tiburon town residents just aren't happy with the status quo. Parks are in need of maintenance. That's what we heard loud and clear through, through the surveys that, that came via mail and via email, the in-person pop-ups, even the comments here tonight that parks are in need of maintenance, they're in need of upgrades. And in some cases, that, that we do need new amenities as a town and, and we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Prior to my short time on town council as a Post Commissioner, for years Tiburon residents asked us as Post Commissioners for new amenities, and we put together exhaustive research with town staff. David and I walked parks, talked to neighbors. Angela and I did a lot of this work. Commissioner Burr and Commissioner Hornbrook, you know, we walked the parks and talked to neighbors and, and put forward proposals to town council. And overwhelmingly, town council was clear in word and action that we could not move forward on projects unless they were small and self-funded without a framework like this. And that's why Commissioner Angela McInerney and I started this, this as a subcommittee when we were on post and brought it to town council. And I think this master plan is critical and it was very comprehensive in terms of how we gathered input. And it's important for everyone to understand how exhaustively the input was gathered. And that every single resident in Tiburon did receive a survey via mail and had an opportunity to fill one out via email. And the purpose of this master plan is not to change anything right now. And the purp- the purpose of this master plan is to have a framework for decisions and to understand what is important to Tiburon's residents and to start on a plan to help us move forward into evaluating projects that will have a positive impact on our community. So I would like to support and propose that we move forward and adopt the Parks Master Plan and begin work on those high-priority items once the, the Parks Master Plan is, is adopted. I would like us to work with Post to determine five to seven projects that can be shovel-ready in the next six to twelve months. I'd like to see that, that list initially come from Post. I think they've done some great background work and, and it had a huge contribution to the Parks Master Plan. And I would also, you know, like to, to thank, you know, again, thank them for their involvement in this, in this process. So those are my comments and I will hand the floor back to Mayor Fredericks.
Thank you, Councilmember Nick Farr. I bring it back to council and I wonder if anyone is ready to make a motion.
I can make a motion. Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we. Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we adopt the Parks Master Plan. But that we adopt the Post recommendations. Everyone's on board with that. That we though delete slide 94 from the main presentation. That we delete references in the appendices on pages 90, 91, 93, 94, 96 to storage facilities in the park. That we. On the WRT slide, Jack, you had a couple of items that you wanted to incorporate in the motion. Can you just read those to me? I think it was the first three things.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay, so is it numbers one through three? Okay, items number one through three on the WRT list. And that's that's the motion.
There were a couple more comments that. I I mean, are you going to include in that the other suggestions that people made, or do we all have to enumerate them?
I'll I'll include them. So the other suggestions are. John. Suggested somehow changing.
That R1 is different in two different locations.
Okay, yes. So R1A and R1B.
Or something along those lines, to clarify that visual isn't a much more important component. In the Richardson Bay area. Secondly, this goes along with your deletion of the map of the new proposal for the direction of the trails, but.
Page 94.
Page 94, but some kind of language talking about this being a concept to be considered in different ways. Different configurations. And finally. A statement when we're talking about typical uses that clarifies that. As time goes by. There are there are uses that the community may want to see or amenities that the community may want to see that have not been captured in the snapshot that we took. When the survey was taken and that those need to be considered in implementation.
Yeah, and then. I would support that because it leaves it open if there's a real need and a place for storage that will be considered in the future if not now.
Let me finish the motion. So the the rest of the motion also was was that we were going to look back at. At the plan, it will come back to us in a final version. So that we can check some of the changes that are made. So that's the motion.
You will accept mine.
And the change of title that Alice.
So we didn't, there there are like, I I we talked about the the WRT. Corrections, one through three and four, I had a heartburn on a couple of them, but there are others and we didn't really talk about them. You wanna, because I items five and six and the general corrections are, they should be made.
Can you pass that? Because it's not coming up. Oh, you're in Microsoft.
It's up to, it's actually item to exhibit four, yeah. The WR8 updated recommendations is what I'm talking about.
So you're talking about costs and funding, number five and number six?
Yeah.
And the general corrections. Okay, so has everyone seen that? And is everyone okay with adding that to the motion? Okay, so I'm now adding five. From the WRT Other Recommended Changes to the October 2024 draft. We're adding five costs and funding, six decision-making framework, and general corrections. So moved.
Mayor, if I may just, or Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I may clarify your motion, you start off saying motion to approve with all these things to bring back at a at another meeting for final approval. So it would be a motion to direct staff to bring back.
No, it's a motion to approve, and then we will see it. We will, it will come back to another meeting. And then if somebody wants to amend it, it could be amended at that time. Right, so we're we're approving the final plan tonight. And then it would come back so that if there was something that, you know, WRT wrote that was weird and freaky, we could say, okay, that wasn't our intent. You know, in a perfect world, we would have. You know, had had more time and ability to make the changes, but this is how it goes in a public meeting. So it's not always organized and pretty, but it gets it gets, we get the job done, right?
For question. If we're approving it tonight and it comes back, what form does it come back on the agenda? Actually, it could come back on an agenda item that simply asks us to affirm that the staff edits reflect the motion that was made to approve it. Is that a way to do it?
It's one way.
I mean, or or it could just come.
I I mean, I think this, I understand the desire to approve a plan tonight, don't get me wrong, but I think the most simplest way is to direct staff to make the changes that you've made in your motion. And bring it back on consent for approval, but you could do it either way.
Yeah, I thought that was the simplest way too. What do you think, Holly?
I I think we should approve the plan tonight. I I think the the changes are going to be fine. It's a lot of grammatical typos.
Now, there is some substantive changes to, maybe if it cut, we'll approve it tonight and it comes back for for us to say that it, the document reflects what we approved. Rather than a whole approval of the plan. So what we'd be approving of is that particular document.
Yeah, I I think, here's what I think. I think we should approve it tonight. And we can always change the plan. This is a living document. This is not the final thing, but I think it it makes sense to approve it tonight. There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second, sure.
So let's take a vote.
I'm sorry, I mean, I think, is there any more discussion? I don't know.
No, there's no more discussion. We're taking a vote on the motions.
The mayor is seeking a classification, so we are approving it tonight, and then it's coming back just to approve that what we, the document we get reflects the changes we approved, the document we're approving tonight.
It'll come back in some form or fashion that will figure out an appropriate agenda title to affirm that the edits were made correctly based on your approval.
And I think the interest is in not opening each and every issue again when it shows up again. Although I do support the Vice Mayor's statement that it is a living document, and at some point when we consider the projects themselves, it will be open to change.
Anyway, when it comes back, we can amend it if we want.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, so we should probably.
All right, maybe we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Nick Farr.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
I think so.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Why do I have to follow him? Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. And again, thank you for the energy of our community. All right. You're not leaving, are you? All right, we're moving on now to the next agenda item, which is the Transportation and Infrastructure Study, where we review the makeup of the Advisory Committee. Is there a staff report of some kind?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor and Council, at the November 6 meeting, the Tiburon Town Council received a status update from Parametrics, Inc. on the evaluation of existing transportation infrastructure along State Route 131. We call it the Traffic Study. At the conclusion of the presentation, the council directors staffed returned back with an action item to appoint Councilmember John Wellner to the advisory group and to consider other changes to the committee structure that may be desired by council. And that is my staff report. So we are back.
All right, so I I'm prepared to hear a motion to appoint Councilmember Wellner. Is there any discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, so I I would vote to, I would make a motion to put Councilmember Wellner in the current city of Belvedere seat.
We have to do public comment before we, if there are any questions first.
Oh, we just got so excited. All right, public comment.
Parker Pringle. Councilmember Vice Mayor Thier, you last meeting, you said you wanted the public to be able to attend the advisory committee meetings. And I think that interested some people, and they would be interested in being able to do that. And it might be beneficial for them to to especially to keep pushing this thing along. That's number one. Number two. Can maybe Mayor Fredericks could tell us a little bit about influencing Caltrans and if there might be an opportunity here or a little bit later in the future to, I don't know, get people maybe outside the council who might be interested in pushing this thing forward with an idea to exerting as much influence on Caltrans as possible. And for your reference, I'd referred to Mill Valley's Traffic Task Force, which basically had a supervisor, state assembly member, et cetera. I don't know if they're just honorifics, but it'd be interesting to hear if there's an opportunity for that for Tiburon.
That's interesting.
So, thanks.
Right, interesting idea. Okay, any further public comment on this item? I'm seeing not bringing it back.
So I would make a motion that John Wellner go into the seat that is currently for the city of Belvedere.
I don't know that I'd want to remove Belvedere from that committee.
Well, there's a lot of talk at the meeting that you weren't at, that Belvedere should not have a place because they're not paying for the study and they're not. We already have Bob McCaskill, who is from Belvedere, who's on the committee and the T, the Traffic Relief JPA is actually paying for the study. They're contributing $75,000.
I have a question. In in the last meeting, we, I I believe we had consensus in terms of asking Greg to reach out to Belvedere to see if they would be willing to to pay a portion of the study. Because there was some concern, I think, also consensus with the town council that Belvedere was not contributing, but was financially, but was somehow on the task force.
I don't recall there being consensus about asking for funding. I can tell you that. In subsequent to the meeting on November 6, I think it was. You know, again, I wasn't asking specifically, but I think it's unlikely Belvedere will be contributing to the traffic study, is all I will say.
So so let me just comment that because Belvedere does and will continue to contribute to our congestion, it's very important to have an elected there who will actually take reports back to their council. I think that's different than having a group that is doing great work, have a representative. I think they're all a benefit. And if there's opportunities to leverage a little to get some funding, that'll be great, but I think it's more important to value the input.
So John can just be added? We don't have to take someone off?
Correct.
Oh, okay, then I move that we add John Wellner to the committee. I thought we had to take someone off.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Oh, roll call.
Okay.
But we should ask for funding, Greg, even if they will say no. I agree with Councilmember Nick Farr.
That's not part of the motion, is that?
It's not. Yeah, you could just ignore it, okay?
I mean, it it can be a motion if we need it to be a motion. I will, I will take it as.
Direction from the council.
And and John promises to work to make them feel very guilty, right?
Right, and if they don't contribute, we'll make sure that whatever plan we come up with benefits Tiburon at Belvedere's expense.
We'll reroute all the traffic through Belvedere.
Roll call, please.
Just for the for the record, was there a, was there a second?
A second.
Yeah, there was a second.
Jack. Councilmember Nick Farr.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
And Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. Moving now to an update on how we spent the American Rescue Plan funding and confirm the final balance of that account.
If you give me a moment here. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the patience. As council recalls, as part of the American Rescue Plan, the town received a 2.17 $2,172,086 allocation from that plan. Just some quick summary notes that the program timelines require that the council obligate all of those funds by December 31 of this year, and obligation is more than just earmarking or saying we're going to spend that on this. It's actually having an order or a contract for service or goods. Prior to this meeting, the council has made a number of allocations, excuse me, a number of expenditures or authorized a number of expenditures from that allocation, and that table is included in the staff report as well as on the screen now. And I'm not going to go through each each project, but you'll see the projects that you over the past three years or so you've approved and we've expended. I will note that we did receive late mail regarding one of the projects that I listed as complete, which is the downtown kiosk. Isn't technically complete in the sense that the kiosk hasn't been installed as of yet, but the expenditure of the allocate, the expenditure approved by council has been has been made. So the expenditure is complete, but the project is waiting for the Chamber of Commerce to finish the art in panels. I believe that'll be installed in the kiosk, which will then be installed in in the location that council approved. The kiosk is currently being stored at the corporate. The three projects that are are, setting that one aside, the three projects that are still ongoing are, or as of tonight, maybe not the Parks Master Plan, but we certainly haven't made the final expenditure on that, although we don't anticipate the amount changing. The traffic study, which you've allocated $100,000 of ARP funds towards, and the very last project, which is the focus really of the discussion here, is the RBSD purchase enclosure. That project is not 100% complete, and the final expenditure is not quite known. Right now, our estimate of the final cost of the project is $1,084,000, and if that were true, it would leave a balance of $6,364 of ARP funds. What I'm suggesting is that based on the outcome of the RBSD project, there's sort of one of two scenarios that'll happen. The first will be that the RBSD project ultimately comes in less than $1,093,640. And that would result in a, some ARP funds unexpended. My recommendation in this scenario is that the council direct staff to allocate the remainder of the ARP funds to the traffic study, and that would decrease the $100,000 allocation from general fund dollars by the same amount. The other potential scenario is that the RBSD project exceeds 100, $1,093,640. In that instance, staff is confident that the approved budget of this year has sufficient funds to make up whatever small amount that may be in the end. So again, with that, the recommendation is to confirm the full cost of the RBSD Ponds Project shall be funded by American Rescue Plan Funds. And if the final RBSD project costs is less than $1,093,640, allocate any remaining ARP funds to the traffic study project.
So that we are actually asked to approve an action, which is what to do if there are, is a deficit or or more money needed for the RS, the RS, whatever.
Richardson Bay.
RBSD Ponds Project.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
That was a move. We we need to have public comment.
Hi, Chuck Hornbrook, Tiburon. My only request from this process is that when you ask staff or direct staff to give more detail about some of the money that has been spent. It's been great that we've been able to have these dollars, but 92% of the dollars were spent for very large projects, and we're not quite sure what the outcome was. When you guys, my just request is, is when you ask them or as a member of the public, is that we make the town accountable for how we're spending dollars. That's all. Because it's not clear what the impacts of all these dollars were, except for like, well, we didn't have to pay for it ourselves. Which is an interesting perspective, but you still need to know, like, understand, like, what did.
what did, uh, Destination Tiburon and Chamber of, uh, Commerce for the contributions? What did that 103,000 dollars add to it? Now, I know with, with the ranch, it was very beneficial, right? They needed to balance their budget, it makes sense. But all these other big dollar value pieces, just as in accounting, you wanna know from a good business practice, how are they valuable? And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Um, so most of these items actually came before council, didn't they?
I'm sorry?
Most of these expenditures came before council.
Every single one, council.
Either as a project or in the budget process.
Uh, you're right, could have been the budget process, but most were individual items that we brought to council for specific action on a.
Okay, um, is there any other public comment?
Oh.
I'm seeing none. We have a motion.
Oh, we have, we have comment.
I'm sorry, Bruce, were you gonna say something?
I guess, brief recommendation on the changes. I would recommend possibly asking WRT for a red line copy, where you can easily identify all the changes in a form.
Okay, that's.
Okay, we, we've passed that item.
I, I, okay, I just.
Okay, we're, we're now on a different item. Thank you, Bruce. And there's a motion on the floor. Would you like to repeat it?
So moved.
I'll second that. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Nick Farr.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thier.
Yes.
Mayor Fredericks.
Yes. Are there any town council reports? Town manager report?
No, Madam Mayor.
We are adjourned, folks. Thank you very much.